Mr. Mayor, counting down.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, neither visible but liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to also give a quick announcement. Members of the public can join our meeting via Zoom using the webinar ID 991-9362-8666 with the call in number 1669-900-9128. Currently, the streaming service is down, but people can join us via Zoom and also through Channel 27.
Great. So, roll call?
Roll call. So, there's no request under Roll Call Item A. We'll go through the roll call now. Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
And Mayor Lentz.
Here. All right. Report out of closed session. Tom, anything to report, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Council met in closed session to discuss a personnel matter and conducted that review and provide staff direction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Okay, adoption of tonight's agenda. Let's see, I think we do have a change. No, we're good. Okay. So, I'll take a first and a second to adopt tonight's agenda as it's...
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, so, moving on to awards and presentations. Where is Karen? Oh, there she is, over there. You know, usually when we recognize folks that are in the audience, and so I'm looking. So, yeah, so tonight, we're recognizing Karen Kinzner for 31 years of service to the city of Brisbane. That is amazing. So, I have a proclamation I would love to read to Karen. Whereas Karen Kinzner has dedicated 31 years of exemplary service to the city of Brisbane, serving as a valued member of the Department of Public Works. Whereas throughout her tenure, Karen Kinzner has faithfully and diligently served the community as a deputy public works director, contributing significantly to the development, maintenance, and enhancement of our vital infrastructure, trails, and open space. And whereas she was assigned as the staff lead to the Traffic Advisory Committee in 2006, which later became the Complete Street Safety Committee in 2013; whereas she was assigned as the staff lead for the Open Space and Ecology Committee in 2014; and whereas Karen Kinzner has consistently demonstrated exceptional expertise, professionalism, and commitment in her role overseeing numerous projects critical to the well-being and progress of our city, such as managing the Tunnel Avenue Bridge Replacement Project, the City Hall remodel, and all citywide pavement repair projects. And whereas colleagues in leadership have consistently praised Karen Kinzner for her strong work ethic, problem-solving skills, mentorship of younger engineers, and collaborative spirit, leaving a lasting positive impact on the department and the community. And whereas upon her retirement, Karen Kinzner will be greatly missed by her colleagues and the community she has served with distinction, but can now look forward to a well-deserved retirement, enjoy the fruits of her labor, and now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council, the city of Brisbane, on behalf of the entire community, extends its deepest gratitude and highest respect to Karen Kinzner for her distinguished service and unwavering commitment to the public good. Be it further proclaimed that we wish Karen Kinzner a retirement filled with health, happiness, and the enjoyment of her future endeavors. Thank you so much, Karen. Come on up.
They're gonna let me speak before he goes. Hello, my name is Robin Leider, and I'm the old former city manager with the city of Brisbane. And tonight, I'm glad that you indulged me to have the privilege to honor Karen. Unfortunately, Jim Thompson, who was the public works director, wasn't able to come tonight, but he asked me to speak on both of our beheads. Karen was Jim Thompson's very first hire, and he was so proud of hiring her. I still vividly remember being introduced to Karen for the first time, and I recall thinking how young she looked. And remarkably, 31 years later, I have the same thought, how young she still looks. But beyond her appearance, over these three decades, Karen worked her way up through the public works department with dedication, determination, no nonsense, and a whole lot of skill. She took on bigger projects and more challenging projects, and she built a reputation that those of us who knew her from the start always knew that she would earn. On a more personal note, Karen was always a kind and caring person who was always ready to help anyone, whether it is the community or at work. She brought a heart to her work. She made this city better, not just through her projects, but through her very presence here in our town. Karen, we thank you for all that you have given to this city, and we wish you nothing but joy and fulfillment in whatever you choose to do next. You leave behind a legacy that this community is proud of, and that you made us better just by being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. All right.
Got my pen. I'm usually here to take notes.
There you go.
Thank you all. That's very, very sweet from everyone. I'm kind of choked up. I didn't write a lot, but I want to say a couple things. It's been challenging. It's been rewarding. I'm excited for retirement, but nervous at the same time. I'm sure everyone who gets to that point is. I was thinking about, I worked a few years before, at San Joaquin County before I came here, and that felt like a family. But this feels more like a family, not just council and staff, but the community too. Like, I feel like I know so many people and have worked with them for so long, it really is like a family. So, I hope I stay in touch and continue to know what's going on in Brisbane and, you know, stay involved. And what else did I want to say? Yes, I just, I appreciate all of you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Karen.
Thank you.
Any council members that'd like to say something, call in.
Karen Kinzer, Karen Kinzer. I read The Blast the other day, and I noticed there was a photograph in there, and I went, oh, that's too bad, they didn't find a photograph of when she first got here. And dovetailing on what Robin said, it was an old photograph. You don't look a whole lot different, which is really a credit to you. I wish we could all say that. I just want people to know, this is one tough cookie. She is so tenacious. I don't know how anybody could go through so many decades, literally, think of it as decades. It's not years. It's decades of your life. Grant proposals, tenaciously. We get turned down, Karen's back there writing another proposal and researching, how can we make this better? How can we find another opportunity? Meetings, you probably feel like you don't ever want to have to attend, have to attend a meeting again. I had the pleasure of working with Karen on Complete Streets, and her dedication in being prepared, producing documents, responding to committee members is just exemplary. And you've got some really big shoes to fill, and your dedication is absolutely uncompromised. I want to thank you for, bottom of my heart, and everyone else who had the pleasure to serve with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Karen, while you're leaving, and it's a big step, and it's a little scary, don't be scared of retirement. It is wonderful. Not having to set your alarm, or get across a bridge, or be somewhere that you don't really want to be, even if you want to be there, it's a wonderful thing. Everything that I've interacted with you on has been so positive, and I am so appreciative of what you've been able to accomplish for the city. And you did it in a man's environment.
Yes.
You went out there into the trenches, and you got dirty, and you were one of the people in there doing that job every day, and it didn't matter if you were a male or a female. And I think that's a testament to people coming up in the workplace, that they can be anything they want to be and succeed. So, thank you so much for succeeding on the behalf of Brisbane, and good luck.
So, Karen, you're gonna have to share your skincare routine when we take a break, because clearly it works. And I just, I mean, want to thank you for your many years of service to Brisbane. You're truly an inspiration. I hope one day that I'll look back on my career and I'll have 30 years serving Brisbane in some capacity under my belt, so. And Terry took the words right out of my mouth. Not only have you served Brisbane for such a long time, but really in a male-dominated department. And I think that takes a lot of tenacity, and as, you know, a woman in generally a male-dominated field, it's really nice to see other women in Brisbane ascend to department heads and positions, high-up positions that you've been in. And so, you have so much respect for me, and I know you have made the rest of the council, I'm sure that they would agree with me, very proud in all the work that you've done. If there's anything that I know from you, it's that you are a problem solver, and you try to figure out how to make things work. And we've been working together through Public Art, putting that staircase in, which is an amazing collaboration between public works and public art, and using these funds to create not just something that's functional, but something that's beautiful. And you've really paved the way of how that works for public works in relationship to public art. And I think that you've laid a really solid groundwork to continue these kinds of collaborations that will benefit Brisbane for generations to come. So, thank you, and enjoy your retirement. And if you feel that you have it in you, pop in and say hi. I'm sure everyone will be happy to see you.
Definitely want to see those stairways.
Yes.
Frank?
Karen, all of these amazing words people are saying tonight, and you and I have only worked together for the past few months, really. So, all I can say is thank you for your patience with all of my questions, thank you for your responsiveness, and thank you for helping to move our work on the Complete Streets along. So, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Karen. You know, yeah, you've been an amazing role model in so many ways. I really appreciate our opportunity to work together on the Crocker Park Trail. All the attributes that you have went into that project, because without you really taking the lead and getting it dialed in and checking off all the boxes and talking to the right people, that project probably would not have happened. And we have that kind of weed patch of a trail out there today. And so, there are so many things that you will see, or people will see in our community that you touched, and very few people get the opportunity to do that. And, but you did get that opportunity, and you didn't, you didn't let it go to waste. And these 31 years, you worked every single minute of those 31 years, and we're all grateful. And so, besides this proclamation, we also have this beautiful orchid that we would love to give to you. And after we have, you know, a group picture, we'll have a little reception to chat with you, give you a hug, and, you know, and just wish you well in your retirement. So, why don't you come on up, and, yeah, and we'll do group picture. There you go. There you are, that's right. I'll put this thing back.
Please.
All right, so we got the orchid there.
This way?
Okay.
Orchid perfect.
Yeah.
It does.
Yeah, exactly. All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, let's spend a few minutes outside and around the foray, and then we'll come on back to our city council meeting. So, this is an opportunity for anyone, uh, who wants to speak on a matter that's not on tonight's agenda. So, I do have one slip, but if anyone else wants to speak under oral communications, please fill out the slip and give it to the city clerk. And then, anyone online, just raise your hand. So, uh, we have, uh, Frida and Ariel. From San Bruno Mountain Watch. Alright, come on up.
Okay. Can you guys hear me alright?
Perfect.
Okay, sweet. Um, hi, my name is Frida. I'm a board member of San Bruno Mountain Watch. I've served in this role for about a year and a half, um, and really have grown to love the community and those in Brisbane. I've also attended Chamber of Commerce mixers and it has been a delight to socialize with friendly faces, some new and some familiar. Um, I really just wanted to extend my gratitude to the city of Brisbane for letting us use the park for our Summer Solstice Festival. Um, garnered lots of support and attendees and it was the first of its kind for San Bruno Mountain Watch. Um, I really hope we can host similar events in the future to raise awareness about the importance of environmental conservation on the mountain. Um, thank you and I'll let Ariel say some, uh, a few words.
Hi, everyone. It's really nice to be here. I'm Ariel with San Bruno Mountain Watch and I've been working now on San Bruno Mountain for 10 years and still, um, you know, falling more in love with the mountain every, every year and with the community. So, really grateful to be here and I also want to express how thankful we are to the city council for not only sponsoring, um, our Summer Solstice celebration, but for being in attendance and also for contributing in such an important way to our, our community potluck and helping organize the event. We were really, um, assented by what a lovely turnout we had at the park. I just had many moments when, um, enjoyed looking out at the music, um, kids making origami butterflies and watercolors, people enjoying the exhibits about insects on San Bruno Mountain and going around to different tables. It was a really special event and, um, we'd love to host it again. And, uh, we're also grateful to all the city staff that supported the event. The Parks and Recreation Department was super helpful, allowed us to borrow, uh, a whole lot of tables and chairs for, um, our event. And also, the Playing Department was able to review our, our sound permit, um, even the City Hall allowing us to, um, park our truck in the parking lot for a week. It had all the tables in there and I was visiting family in Mexico for a week, so I couldn't return them that, the day after and we were grateful to leave our, our truck here where it was, things were safe. So, in so many ways, the city was supportive about our event and that's just, um, demonstrative of how the city has always been, everything that we've wanted to do on the mountain, uh, community restoration events, um, the city's always really supportive and every staff member and city council member has always been really generous with their time and always really kind to our organization. So, thank you again so much for all your support and we're excited to continue partnering with the city for many other events as well in the, in the future. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your great work. Appreciate it. Alright, anyone else? Okay. No one has hand raised. So, we'll move on to the consent calendar and we're going to, uh, pull item D from the consent calendar. Okay. Any other items, uh, that a council member would like to pull for further discussion?
I would like to pull item J just for a brief acknowledgement of it.
Got it, got it. Okay, so then I'll entertain a motion to approve items C, E, F, G, H, I, and K of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, um, how about this? Why don't we do, uh, J and, um, staff report, please?
Sure.
Or unless you, you wanted to say something?
Well, you know, I, if, if staff wanted to give a brief report, I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of staff to complete the purchase of five properties for perpetual, put into perpetual open space with funds that were made from a sale of surplus property that was controversial to begin with, uh, the sale of the property. But I think that in the overall scheme of things, it was a really good trade-off, if you will, that we have several acres of property that will be preserved now instead of a little swath right behind a building. And I just want to thank staff for their diligence on the negotiating and working with, you know, both on the sale of the other property and the acquisition of these new five properties. So, I just wanted to announce it to the public that this was a, in my opinion, a win.
Oh, it was a huge win. A huge win. And thank you for pulling it, Terry.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if I may add one comment to that.
Okay.
I, I think one thing that's important to recognize as well is that we had two swaths of properties on the top of the mountain in the acres. And now we have a contiguous swath of properties which is kind of re-unifying what shouldn't be disparate. And, and I really want to also acknowledge efforts of staff and Jeremy in particular, who put a lot of time into contacting property owners and making it happen. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. You know, that was, that was one of Jeremy's, uh, top priorities when he first came on. He says, "I'm gonna get some acres for you guys." And sure enough, he did. He delivered.
Well, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the, the only, thank you. The, the only way something like this is possible is to have partners, uh, who are the owners of the properties. And I want to thank them, you know, for making this commitment to the city and the city's, uh, goals in preserving the mountain. It would not be possible without their role. So, thank you to them.
Alright, great. So, I guess we, uh, Tom, we need to approve item J? So...
You do, Mr. Mayor.
So, I'll take a motion.
I would make a motion to approve item J, the acquisition of five properties in the Brisbane acre for purposes of open space and habitat conservation.
Alright, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. Okay, so now, item D, approve amendment to reimbursement agreement with 90 Santa Clara. Uh, staff report, please.
I'm sorry, sir. We don't have an oral staff report prepared just because it's a written item on consent. Uh, I don't know if the council wants to have questions directly of a city engineer and city staff or if you want to talk to, uh, two of the parties that are mentioned in this or here in the room. There's a representative from both 80 Santa Clara and 90 Santa Clara. So, I don't know if you'd like to take their oral testimony first or however you'd like...
Well, you know, let's, let's open it up to council questions and we'll see if anyone has questions on this side first now.
I do have a question. So, for item D, is it possible to move this item to a future meeting closer to the actual agreement expiration date, which is 22 months in the future?
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, Terry?
I, I think that for public information, we should at least read what the item D is, whether there's a staff report or not, but just the general gist of what this item is and what the mechanics are behind it. And then we can have better idea of if there's questions or if the public wants to speak.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, would you like me to do that now?
Sure.
Let me, let me try and do my very best to, to give you an oral picture of this because there are many parcels involved that are in play. So, many years ago, prior to 2007, San Francisco Street ended before the address now known as 29 San Francisco, which is on the curve as you're going up San Francisco and coming around to Santa Clara. And it also ended prior to 90 Santa Clara, which is if you are coming out Santa Clara on that back road, it's the house that's got the cobblestones that are, that are the fascia that are the outside of it. And what had happened was a developer came in and owned the property at 29 San Francisco and wanted to develop a home there. And what it was determined was that to comply with fire code, they would have either had to put a hammerhead turnaround that a fire apparatus, a fire truck could turn around in, or they would have to connect the street with Santa Clara. And unfortunately, they didn't have nearly enough land to put the hammerhead, so they had to do the connection. As that project was starting to develop, another gentleman came in and decided they wanted to develop 90 Santa Clara. So, the project pretty much became one project. It was two single-family dwellings that were being developed. And between them, they were gonna share the cost of creating this new roadway and deeding it over to the city. In fact, at the time, it wasn't city right-of-way. That, that was private land that was deeded to the city. As this was going on, eventually, one party took over both of the single-family dwellings and their building and took on responsibility for extending that road, connecting those two roads, connecting San Francisco and Santa Clara. As they were moving along, they approached the city and said, "Hey, city, there is a parcel, that is a developable parcel, that is between these two addresses. And if and when that parcel develops, they will benefit from this private roadway that we have built and also private land that we have deeded over to the city in fee. So, we would like you to enter into a reimbursement agreement with us so that they would pay their fair share," which said fair share was calculated, I believe it's $2,007. We're now 18 years into the term of that reimbursement agreement. And the parties that will receive funds back from a reimbursement agreement have come to the city and said, "That parcel next door to us hasn't developed yet, but it still has development potential and we would ask that you extend the term of this reimbursement agreement another 10 years."
Alright, alright. So, um, now that you got that, Terry, do you have any questions for, uh, staff?
I don't have any questions for staff at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Madison, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Um, I, I got a couple, Randy.
Oh, wait, I do.
Okay, well, why don't you go, Madison?
Has, have, have we orchestrated this kind of agreement in the past with other?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Sure.
How many, how many parcels?
At least three that I can think of. The, the one that was most recent, which prompted staff to favorably consider this request from the one homeowner, happened back on King's Road. It was a number of years ago, there was an uphill property that was required to widen the roadway. And on the downhill side, they put a rather significant retaining wall in, which is an extensive cost. It was in a similar condition. It was a benefiting property that was downhill. They would have had to do the road widening on their own. It was a developable parcel. And what happened in that scenario was a developer bought the parcel and within two weeks after the agreement expiring, they turned in a building permit application. The council at that time, uh, did not find that to be particularly fair. Discussions were entered into with the developer and ultimately, the dollar amount that was to be reimbursed to the uphill party, the developer agreed to pay half of that and the city paid the other half out of its general fund.
And in the other instances?
San Diego Court Extension is, is the next one that comes to mind. When all of San Diego Court was built and they had to do roadway widening, connecting down to San Bruno was the other one.
And everyone paid in?
There's, uh, no one's been reimbursed on that one yet. There haven't, there hasn't been, as you know, sometimes we're starting to run out of easily developable parcels here.
Yeah.
So, some of that's not happening. There's at least one other and I'm sorry, she's not coming to mind.
But there have been some that have come in?
Yes.
That have...
Sure, and they write the check, yes.
Reimbursed here and there?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay.
If I may?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, based upon, uh, Councilmember Davis's questions, what were the terms on those in terms of time?
We have had 10-year and 20-year ones.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alright, um, any other questions for us? Okay, so...
No, I just want to clarify. In the request here, uh, this is a 20-year, uh, reimbursement agreement, uh, that's in place today and it is in its 18th year. We have 22 months until it expires and the request is to extend it for another 10 years.
That is correct, sir.
So, it would be 12 years from now.
You understand correctly, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, so, um, Randy, I know that you said this in your, um, I guess your staff report, in your story of, of, uh, you know, what transpired. So, just, uh, I, I just want to, um, just clarify that, uh, the owner of 90 Santa Clara Street, uh, in order for them to build on their property, they needed to extend or connect Santa Clara with, with San Francisco to make it one, uh...
Yes, they had a requirement from the fire department to provide access for the engines and the trucks and that was the, there are many options you can choose from. There's a suite of improvements you can make, but the widening of the roadway was the only one that fit within the space that was available.
Got it, got it. And then, and then the same thing with 29 San Francisco, the only way that that house could have been built was to then, was to build this road.
I, I think barring doing a really significant amount of grading uphill from the curve, as you, as you come up San Francisco and you turn around that curve, I suppose they could have leveled out a bunch of that land in there and created a, a hammerhead in there, but I, I don't know that that would have been as feasible.
Got it, got it. And then, uh, so then there's this property in between the two.
Mm-hmm.
It's 80 Santa Clara.
Correct.
And so, if the road is not constructed and say 29 San Francisco and 90 Santa Clara Street, say they didn't build their, on, on their properties, but 80 Santa Clara wanted to, they would have had to have built this road, correct?
Yes, they, they, they would have been subject to the same fire code requirements. And so, they would have had to obtain the necessary property because they don't have it in their possession. They would have had to obtain the necessary property and they would have had to create fire apparatus access.
Okay, alright.
I have a question.
Sure.
If they sell the property, does the agreement, is it assumed that a new property owner would need to pay as well?
Yes.
Or is it terminated?
No, it's for 80 Santa Clara, for right now, for the remaining 22 months, it's, it's recorded in the county and, and it's against their APN.
And then, you know, I, I have a question for Tom. And, and so, it's under the agreement and it says that, uh, this is on the, let's see, two of 20 or four of 20? I think it's two of 20. And, and it's in paragraph three at the bottom, it says, "Owners may change the designated recipient by written notice to city assigned by all owners or other successors in interest." So, um, heaven forbid, you know, if, if the owners passed away, does, and there was no agreement with that, where would the money go?
Sir, sir...
Can you point me to the page?
Yeah, could we, could we ensure we're on, sir? I'm not sure I'm on the same page as you either.
Okay, so it's, um, it's page 16? Yeah, okay, yeah, page 16.
Okay.
Number three. It's in that reimbursement agreement. And it's the last sentence in number three.
Wouldn't it just be the successors of interest?
You know, I, I don't know if that's, if it's, if it isn't...
It would be, it would be the successors of interest and in that case, they can either benefit or have a burden, depending on the facts at the time, but yes, that would be...
Now, I get where we're looking.
That's how, okay, okay. And then, and then item number, uh, five, you know, this, you know, this document was created by city attorney, um, Hal Topol and, uh, it says that the agreement shall remain in effect for a period of 20 years from the date hereof. Could, uh, they have made that agreement longer? Or is, is 20 years kind of a max time for such?
It's not a, uh, unless there's a, there may be some special provision in the code that I'm not aware of, but generally, uh, back when this was done, you would not go longer than 20 or 25 years on property because, um, there's this funny thing in the law that, uh, nobody in, in, even in law school understands called the rule of perpetuities.
Yes.
It gets all sorts of stuff that's not relevant here and it doesn't apply here, but people get scared of it, so they cut off things at 20 and 25 years. Now, it would really depend on what the, uh, what is allowed, um, not just on your current law, but within your, uh, your authority. You would have the authority to go longer 20 years currently.
Okay, thank you. Alright, uh, any other questions for staff? Okay, so, uh, we've been told that both property owners are in the House and so, if they would like to come before the council and, and speak, uh, they may do so. So, a representative from, from 90 Santa Clara?
Hello, I'm Yisaneh, I'm the son of one of the owners, my dad over there, so I'm here to facilitate the communication.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, basically, we just want to look into amending the contract. And I think the twenty-year timeline is just a logistic and allows us to revisit and make appropriate modifications.
Okay, all right. Do any council members have any questions? Okay. Well, thank you.
Sorry, I'm the owner of the Twenty-Nine San Francisco.
Okay.
Ninety Santa Clara, so.
Got it.
Appreciate you guys as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, and then we have someone from Eighty Santa Clara?
Hi, City Council and Mayor. This is Amy Chang.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm kind of nervous. I don't usually stand up in a podium. So I represent my sister. We owned the property for eighteen years, and we lost a lot of opportunity. We couldn't build for unfair imposed reimbursement that we don't even know where the numbers come from. Certainly, there was some sort of expense that was, improved the world. And because it's so unfair to us, we not willing to pay, we willing to wait twenty years. And that's what the agreement said. When we got this message, we were so upset. Why would the city, even staff, agree to extend? And I really appreciate all the city council members and mayors asked great questions. Twenty years was a long time. We lost so much, so much opportunity. We couldn't live there. So I really wish that twenty years is enough, and please don't extend this agreement. Thank you. I appreciate you listening.
Okay. All right. You know, typically, you know, we ask members of the public to speak on, you know, even when it's not a public hearing, but this really is kind of between two families. So unless you have some really pertinent information. Okay.
It's a safety concern. I go around the corner pretty often because I pick up a friend on Santa Clara. And periodically, there is a black car that parks in the dirt, heading, you know, towards the east, around that curve where the fire road chain is. And I think that's dangerous because if the fire department ever needed to use the fire road, it might be blocked. So I don't think that anybody should be parking their car there. So I don't know whose property it is, but I would like them not to park there.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, do council members have any additional questions for, for staff?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I would like for our legal counsel to comment on the last resident's comments.
I was positive on that. It has been twenty years. I cannot stress how much world has changed, including in municipal law. Now, there would be fairly dramatic and, and as certain as possible notice, prior notice given, not just because it's a property right, but because of the twenty-year period. So I would be remiss if I didn't suggest to the council that this should be put over. We should look at the background a bit and, and see if everybody had an opportunity to actually get their other information in in a timely way.
And, and could you comment on the city's ability and the imposition of fire code and road improvements related to development?
I'm, I'm not following.
Could you elaborate on what the authority of the city is to impose certain road improvements concurrent with development? How they have jurisdiction to impose that?
He has every, yeah, the city has every authority to do what's being proposed. The question that I'm raising is not legal. It's notice-related to make sure there's no doubt about, everybody's up to be heard as a property owner. But legally, can the city do this? Yes, it can.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm, I'm hearing from Tom that he thinks that the idea put forward by Councilmember Kern, Kearns, is to postpone this item to another date when it's been able to be reviewed by legal? And if that's the case, I would make that motion to put that off for a further review.
I'd second that.
Okay, so is there a timeline? I mean, Councilmember Kern said closer to the expiration date.
What? It would be my recommendation that we look at a one-year out. So that would be May of next year.
Okay.
I agree.
Give time for all the parties to review it and, and certainly plenty of time to enter into a negotiation, if so be it.
That's on that, right? So, all right, so if that is the, the motion to, so can we make a motion to postpone for a, you know, a year out, or how do we?
You can make a conditional motion as long as the notice is given properly, and it will be prior to the next time meeting, or the next time it's taken up by the council.
Okay. So with that.
We have a motion in a second.
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on to public hearing. Item L, City of Brisbane Local Stormwater Program Fees. Staff report, please.
Sorry, sir, I'm getting caught up.
That's okay.
Apparently, my iPad is not scrolling as quickly as I'd like it to.
A lot of things on this.
I know. Yeah, you got it. Yeah, man, have it. Oh, good. Thank you so much. Assistant City Manager helping out here. So this one is actually relatively straightforward compared to what happens with SPLNL. Really, all we need to do in this one is to open the public hearing and take public comment. If anybody wants to offer comments here on the local Brisbane stormwater program fees, sir?
Okay, so any questions for staff?
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Okay. Well.
I'll second that.
It says here in my notes that, you know, any council questions, but then it says, okay, now we'll open up the public hearing.
Oh, it didn't seem like anyone had any, so.
All right, I just, I just asking, so, okay. So, yeah, so open up to public hearing, and we'll take comments. So, yeah, so we got a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so any members of the public? Okay, I see a head nodding. Please come on up. Michelle?
I understand how much we need the stormwater fees and all the ways that everything has changed, but is there any way to give any kind of relief on this? Our water and sewer and stormwater bill and everything now is over, it's almost $300 every two months. That's a lot. And the deferred maintenance from all the years when all those seniors didn't, just couldn't afford to pay and everything, it's, it's really burdensome. I mean, we're on a fixed income now. So I don't know if there's any way the city can sort of have some relief on that for the citizens, but, I mean, you gotta do it, you gotta do it, but anything we can do to mitigate that, that would be really helpful.
Definitely feel your pain. All right. Anyone else from the public? Any hands? Nope. All right, so I'll take a motion in a second to close the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
So discussion, can I make a comment? So Randy, on these sport, storm pollution fees, what is the individual parcel rate that we are charging to our citizens for residential?
A single-family dwelling pays $9.48 total citywide. The city collects $51,550 out of this program. And even after we take into account the new commercial fee that was put in, the city is already backfilling this $145,000 out of your general fund.
Right, and, and so it's, it's $10 a year approximately for per resident?
Yes.
And these are all fees that the state keeps mandating what we have to do to treat our stormwater before it runs out into the bay?
One hundred percent correct.
And so these are fees that are being.
Unfunded.
Unfunded by the state, but a requirement of us being a city and having streets and paved roadways. And there's no, we're not recouping anywhere near what we're spending on this.
That is correct.
Okay. In the past, I know other cities have tried to implement, whether it's development fees or other fees, to try to cover the, the state mandated costs, but most cities, unless they do a really large development fee for any property, would, or have been unable to find a funding mechanism for this. Is that somewhat correct?
That, that's very much correct, ma'am. And, and you'll recall that the, I know you won't because we went through there quickly, but it was an item that was on the agenda last year where the city made a very concerted effort and made what I still think is a very valid and defensible argument, that the majority of runoff from impervious services really comes from two sources. It comes from the commercial areas, and it comes from our streets and roads. And that's why we imposed the NITD's commercial fee that the council approved earlier. And that brought in $300,000 that we otherwise would not have been looking for. And so since this program has been in place for over twenty years, we've never once increased the fees against single-family dwellings.
Thank you for your information.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Did you mean Frank?
No.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to note that, that from serving on CCAG, this isn't just about pollution, but it's also stormwater control. And CCAG regularly will monitor the flow from different cities and also is evaluating sea level rise and flooding conditions. And there are projects in the south part of the county that they already are doing as tests to control the runoff. So it, it's, it's a bigger package than just looking at pollutants. That, that is part of it, but there's a lot of monitoring. We're not just throwing money at something and not seeing any type of application for it. Thank you.
Frank?
Yeah, just a quick question regarding the annual charge per parcel. How do we adjust for that? By adjust, I mean increase if we needed to, to cover costs?
I think I'll defer to Mr. McMurro, but I believe it would be a 218 process.
Yeah, it would be a standard, standard fee adoption process. We would have to look to see if there's any limitation because of the nature of the, what the money would be spent on. I don't think there would be one. I think it'd be a straightforward 218 process.
Thank you.
Madison?
I don't have any questions.
You know, Randy, so the estimated budget shortfall for this program is $145,000. Are you seeing any other cities along the peninsula that are implementing ways to generate revenue that could help us further reduce the shortfall besides raising rates on, on our residents?
No. I've seen, I believe, there are two other cities that have raised the rates on their residents, that have raised rates on the single-family parcels. I don't want to say because I, I don't want to misspeak, but I believe two of them have been successful. Across the, across the Nine Barrier County, the voters have routinely voted down efforts to, to try and increase these fees.
Okay, great. If there aren't any further questions, and I don't see any hand raised, I will entertain a first and a second to adopt the resolution of the city council of the City of Brisbane imposing charges for funding the local business stormwater program, authorizing placement of said charges on the 2025, 2026 county tax roll, and authorizing the county tax collector to collect such charges.
Pardon me, sir, just one, one clarification. I think you meant to say the Brisbane, the local Brisbane stormwater program, I believe you said business. I may have said it too many times, it'd get in your head.
Okay, I thought that's what I said, but if I didn't, then that's what I meant.
True.
So we got a first and a second to approve?
So moved?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. So moving on to item M. Imposition of fiscal year 2025, 2026 tax roll charges for the Sierra Point Landscaping and Lighting District. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. As you know, we go through this every year. I've been doing it for about twenty years. And this is a lighting and landscaping assessment fee to maintain the upgraded lighting and landscaping in the Sierra Point, on Sierra Point. It's industrial park, I guess. And we have not raised the fees in a number of years. This allows us to do the regular maintenance and do some special projects some years. This year, we plan to do a lot of repairs to the pathways. So this assessment district also includes the shoreline pathway and the pathways next to the greenbelt, next to the roadways, and we need some concrete and asphalt roadways out there.
All right.
There's a series of steps that, that have to be followed, and they are spelled out in the agenda report, and I, I guess I just made my statement.
All right, thank you. All right, any questions for Karen? No? Okay.
Karen, of course I have a question.
There you go.
It says minor corrections to the engineer's report may be made by staff after the adoption of the resolution if the final county assessor data received after this action differs from the draft data. How, how is that communicated?
We use a consultant that gathers the parcel data from the county and delivers it to us in software, and then we load the rates that we're going to charge, and they port that back to the county to be added to the tax bill. Some, we keep that line in there because some years, that, we get draft data in April, May, and we get final data in July. And sometimes we've gotten it too close to be able to make adjustments. And this year, we did have a lot line adjustment on one of the properties, but we did get it in time. So we don't expect any changes to this.
Great, thank you.
All right. So there's an opening statement, Madam Clark. Do I read that now before opening the public hearing? Okay, so let me read this. This is the time and place set for a hearing on the engineer's report and the levy of collection of the proposed assessment for fiscal year 25, 2025, 2026 for the Sierra Point Landscaping and Lighting District. These proceedings were undertaken pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972. The engineer's report prepared by the engineer of work consists of the proposed improvements, the boundaries of the assessment district, and any zones therein, the proposed diagram, the estimate of costs thereof, and the proposed assessments upon accessible lots and parcels of land within the district. Any one of these items may be the subject of protests or endorsements. You are asked to clearly identify yourself and the property owned by you so that your statements may be correctly recorded. The hearing is declared open, and I will ask the city clerk to report on the various notices given in connection with the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, notices have been mailed and posted as required by the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972. Proofs of mailing and posting are on file in my office. A copy of the engineer's report prepared by the engineer of work was filed in my office on June 11th, 2025, and has been open to the public inspection since that time. Thank you.
Okay, great. So do any council members have any questions? Okay, great. So, um, I, do, do any council members have any questions? Alright, so then I'll, I'll open up the public hearing. No one's raising their hand. I don't see any hands raised online, so I'll take a motion in a second to close the public hearing.
Move we close the public hearing?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any council discussion? Okay, then can I get a first and a second to adopt, uh, a resolution addressing objections and ordering the improvements and confirming the diagrams and assessment for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six for the Sierra Point landscaping and lighting district?
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Moving on to new business, item N. Review of residential parking permit program on Thomas Avenue and request for city council direction. Staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Um, as you, hopefully four of you would remember, one of you, I was not part of the initial process. The Complete Streets Committee took on a lot of complaints about parking, did a lot of investigation, um, counted cars during COVID at the evening hours, the after-work hours, found that parking in randomly selected places was ninety to a hundred percent full, very impacted at that time. So they, with direction from council on their work plan and, and through liaisons, investigated other residential parking permit programs, came back with a recommendation to council, and council decided they wanted to do a test first before implementing a parking program. The options were all of central Brisbane or particular streets that were the worst problems. And there are plus and minuses to both. If you do all of central Brisbane, some people don't have a problem and then they have to get a permit. And if you do certain areas, people that park in those areas could then move to other areas. So we, council chose two streets to look into, Thomas Avenue and Tulare because they're dead-end streets and they were a little bit encapsulated and wouldn't have so much of the overflow. And staff reached out to those neighbors and we found that neighbors on Thomas Avenue were predominantly interested in a program and neighbors on Tulare were not as interested in a program. So we put out this test program starting in November and we told you we'd come back in six months. So in about April, which was six months, as we were getting ready to survey all those neighbors, we understood and we had a neighbor come and speak to you at that time, that the first complaint was issued because it was a complaint-based enforcement program and a number of neighbors got tickets. What we heard at that time and what we also heard when we went, we surveyed and then we also knocked on doors, is that people weren't familiar with the program. They didn't understand how to make the complaint. And generally, they were not in favor. So in our physical paper survey or virtual survey, we had seventy-five percent of the people say they did not want a program. And when Tomas and Toyo and I knocked on doors, we got seventy-five percent of people that said they did not want the program. I think Thomas Avenue is a little bit of a difficult street because it's not representative of the rest of town. You've got some big homes and then you've got some apartment buildings. And what we're finding is that in that neighborhood, people are not interested in continuing a program predominantly. So we're asking for council direction on, you could extend the trial, you could just decide you have a program, or you could end this test.
Alright. Thank, thank you for the staff report, Karen. Uh, Madison, do you have any questions?
No.
Terry?
No questions for staff.
Colleen?
No questions.
Frank?
Um, I do have a question. Um, estimate total cost of this test was?
We paid, we paid the consultant, it's five thousand to set up. So the consultant has a website that allows people to apply for their permit. It issues, it mails the permits. There's, there's an ongoing monthly cost and the twenty-five dollar permit cost, paid for that ongoing monthly cost. So at, at the time to do, um, to do a widespread enforcement by either staff or by a consultant would have cost quite a bit of money. So that's why we ended up making it complaint-based, although that's not your question, but it speaks to.
So including the signage on the street and everything, we're all in for under ten thousand dollars?
Yes.
Thank you.
Karen, um, you know, you did the two surveys. Seventy-five percent of the residents said they would not like to continue the program. If that was the direction of the council, would, are we under any obligation with the consult to continue with their services?
No, we're not. We're, we're just paying monthly cost. We may need a thirty-day notice. I haven't checked that, but that would be the only thing.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so if there aren't further questions for staff, uh, I'll ask if anyone from the public would like to speak? Come on out, Tiffany.
I think that everybody here knows how I feel about this. Um, but I just wanted to remind you guys of the financial burden that it's putting on the residents. And, um, I've gotten tickets even after I purchased a permit pa, permit because I haven't received the permit yet. It's been like two months. So I'm kind of, you know, like, please don't, don't continue this, please. You're just, and there's new people moving in and the management is not aware of the parking situation. So people that are new residents are coming in and they're asking me like, what do we do? And I'm like, hopefully nothing. Hopefully we're going to get rid of this. So, um, I just, you know, wanted to put my two cents in. Please, please don't, let's continue this, guys. Love you.
Did your tickets get dismissed when you?
I have four pending right now.
Didn't you contested them?
On hold. I did contest all of them, but they're still just pending. Um, I haven't received any word on, on any of them yet. So, thank you.
How much were those tickets?
Uh, forty dollars each. So I have, yeah, forty dollars for, for of them.
Hundred and sixty dollars.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, and parking in front of my own house, so, yeah. And even after I received, after I purchased the permit, I forgot to put the, my receipt on my windshield and so I got another ticket. And, um, I know the woman who's doing it, but you know, I can't stop her from doing it, so. But I can please beg you guys to not continue this.
Alright, thank you very much.
Can I ask her another question?
Sure.
Um, do you perceive that there's parking on Thomas for people going to the airport or people who don't live in Brisbane or on your block that are parking on your block and going elsewhere?
I don't see that. I, um, usually, like, I know everybody's car that's on the block. It's the field that people will leave, you know, they'll leave their car there for days. I mean, there's cars that have been there for years that have not moved. So I don't even know if the, the airport issue is the problem. I think people just know that they could park their car up there and leave their cars up there, so.
Got it, thanks.
Alright, thank you. Alright, any other members?
Can I just make a one comment to, uh, Councilman or Councilperson Davis's, uh, question, which is a great one, by the way? The subsidies have ended at rideshare now. So what used to be a cheap ride to the airport, you just hail an Uber and you'd be at the airport in a few minutes and it would cost you eight bucks. Those are done now. There's no more subsidies. So to get to and from the airport at this point, it can cost upwards of sixty, seventy, eighty, even ninety dollars at this point.
From here?
From here.
Wow.
From here, yeah. So the subsidies have completely ended. And so at this point, I think I'm seeing a lot less of people parking and unloading bags and hailing Ubers. Um, I'm out quite a bit on foot and I'm just not seeing it as a problem any longer. I'm sure there are people in the community and there's going to be people that say they see it. I'm not seeing it. And I think it's because the subsidies have ended.
Yeah, no, I'm sure that's a good point. So, um, alright, doesn't look like anyone else wants to speak, so council discussion and, Frank started us off there.
Maybe is there anyone online?
I, I don't see anyone with a hand raised. So, um, Frank, anything else you want to add or?
Well, I think that the, this test has run its course. I don't think it was a perfect test, uh, but I do think we got a lot of solid feedback from it. We got a lot of solid, solid data. And I think this is going to help us to move forward, um, and come up with a better robust model because guess what? The parking situation in Brisbane is not going to improve on its own. So this is the right first step, I think. So, that's it.
Got it, got it. Colleen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I'd like to do a little history lesson, especially in deference to Karen Kinzer's departure. And I'm sure if I asked Karen how many times, um, dealing with the traffic committee and then Complete Streets, the committees were contacted by residents going, we have a terrible parking problem, do something. And I know in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, when I first joined Complete Streets, I was told several times that about every ten years, the city gets major requests from residents who are up in arms about parking and saying you need to do something. So I would like to recognize the fact that this project wasn't undertaken by the city as a revenue generator at all, because that's been mentioned. It was promulgated as a result of a survey that went out to residents who responded and said they would like us to look into a parking permit program or, or do a pilot test. I'd like to recognize lots of hours, both on the part of Tomas and Karen and Complete Streets, who really put their heart and soul in this and Commander Garcia in order to provide the best parameters for a test. That being said, at the time when this test was reviewed by the council, the majority of people on Thomas were saying they wanted the test program. So now we're hearing they don't want the test anymore. That being said, maybe it's time to say, Thomas Avenue, the residents have changed, the sentiments have changed. I just, I think we've done our due diligence to the citizens of Brisbane who every ten years demand we try to do something about parking. The opportunity always exists for any neighborhood or street to say, we want a parking permit program that's in our ordinance. And in comment to, um, Councilmember Kern, I'm on San Bruno, and I'm still calling in airport parkers. So it depends on where you live and I think they move around and they talk online and say, here's a street, you can get away with it. So it, it's just going to be an ongoing problem and we need to recognize it. So, um, personally, I think it's time to end the, the permit test because we've had problems. But I do want to recognize all the efforts that staff put in to go door-to-door, literally talking to the residents of Thomas and getting signage put up. I think we went to nth degree that we could in this test. Thank you for that.
Yeah, tha, thank you for recognizing all those, uh, items. Appreciate it. Um, Terry, anything you want to say?
No, I think that, you know, when we first talked about doing this and we really did beat it till it was a dead horse on what the options could be. And I didn't think that it would be well-received because everyone wants control over parking when it's in front of their house until they don't. Because then it's not convenient for them anymore. They wanted to, parking control to be on every other person on the street, but not them. So I, I think this really showed the, what really happens in the real world when there's rules against you. And then you're not happy about it. So I, I think that was human nature that has come out on what the realities are when the rules are applied across the board. And now we don't want them to apply, um, because they're not going to help me in the moment. So I think it's human nature that it, it was a test we needed to go through. Um, I'm glad we didn't do two streets and have all those signs to take out. And there we go.
Madison?
Well, I had serious doubts that this program was going to work, um, just because of the way that it's structured. And that's no fault of anyone. I mean, I think that for this kind of program to be effective would require, um, some kind of dedicated officer with license plate scanning and all of that stuff that we had looked into originally, which would have cost the city over a hundred thousand dollars, which we determined that's not going to work. Um, and so this, the way that this structured is really relies on people to call and report their neighbors. And I think that it's just not, it's not, doesn't create a good environment on a block like Thomas. And so clearly, you know, that's what's happened. And, um, I just think that the burden is placed on residents to call on each other and, and I never think that that'll work. I, I think it's like, it's one of, parking's so interesting and I feel like I say this every time when we get into a parking discussion, but I, I feel like there are fifty percent of people who want you to do something about it. And then you implement, and fifty percent of people who don't care. And then you do something about it and those same, those same, you know, conditions remain. It's like people are angry about having a difficult time parking, but people are as equally angry and in clearly this case, more angry, once you do try to implement a system to do something about parking. And so it's almost, it's a hard thing to touch and actually yield results that are effective and welcomed because people are going to get tickets and nobody likes, nobody likes that. So I, I think the one thing that I was interested in seeing from this program is whether there was really a problem with people parking from the airport, people parking from other blocks. And this type of program should take care of that. And there was this assumption that there was a lot of that happening on Thomas. And I never thought that that was the case. And, but there was, that was thrown out several times, that this was a hotspot for airport parkers. And so I thought that the one good thing out of this was hopefully that we, if that was the case, if that truly was the case, then this kind of program would free up those kinds of spaces. And now definitively, I think this demonstrates that's not true. And that's really important information for us to have, at least on Thomas. It might be happening elsewhere, but at least on Thomas, that's what we know. I saw a lot of comments about the empty lot and that comment was made today. And it's important to note for anybody who might be tuning in that we don't own that property. And so we have nothing to do with those cars, those vehicles. But the residents on Thomas have benefited from that lot being there and being open and being able to park there. And it, it's, it, it's likely to occur that somebody, first of all, a property owner who, who's there may decide, I don't want this happening anymore and block off any car's ability to access their property and they have the right to do so. And they may develop that property and all of that parking would be gone. And so I think that will certainly exacerbate the problem that we're seeing on Thomas. And maybe at that point, it is the right time to bring a program back like this. With respect to it costing money, which I know many people wrote about, um, in the survey results. I, I know nobody likes to pay for a permit, especially parking in front of their own home. We, it, it's again, not a moneymaker, like Councilmember Mackin said, we have administrative fees that we have to pass on. Um, and this council felt like twenty-five dollars, um, was a nominal fee, even though we are sensitive that there are a lot of lower-income residents that live on Thomas. Um, I think that if it was something like a hundred dollars for the permit, that would have been something that maybe we would have subsidized further or reconsidered. But, um, you know, just thank you to all the residents who've written in and expressed how they felt. If we can't make good policy without that feedback. And, um, I, I, I think I speak on behalf of the entire council that we did this with really great intentions. People have complained about parking for years and years and we thought, okay, let's really try to see if we can come up with a program that will address this. And it wasn't successful and you learn lessons and you move on. And that's what we're doing. So obviously I'm not in favor of continuing the program, but I am really thankful that everyone tried it out. And now we have solid data that we can work from in the future.
Yeah, alright, well, uh, do you have anything else you wanted to add, Frank? Yeah, okay, well, you know, thank you, uh, council for the comments and the feedback. Thank you for staff doing your due diligence. You guys went out there and really tried to get the feedback from the community on Thomas. Yeah, it didn't work and, uh, we gave it our best shot. And so we're, I think, all in agreement here that, uh, we should end the program. And so with that, um, if there's, uh, I'll entertain a first and a second to end the program for residential parking permit program on Ta, on Thomas Avenue.
So moved.
Okay, so we got all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Alrighty. Item O. Tha, thank you for coming. And hopefully the next time you come, it's for a better reason.
People parked in front of your house.
Alright, so Complete Streets and Safety Committee, um. All right, so, Complete Streets and Safety Committee. So, we have the Complete Streets and Safety Committee recommended safety, traffic flow, and parking improvements to Visitation Avenue corridor. And so, staff report, please.
Once again, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. There are a number of incidents happened on Visitation Avenue, but maybe unrelated to the core problem. There were a number of issues brought to the council's attention, and council reviewed those in March and asked the Complete Streets Committee to look into Visitation Avenue and how we could improve safety, traffic flow, parking, and all of the issues that were found. So, the Complete Streets Committee, we did a survey and asked people what they thought the issues were. We talked to businesses. Most of the people that answered the survey used Visitation Avenue, but weren't the businesses or people that lived on it. And then, when the committee met, we had the manager, the owner of Midtown Market, come in and talk about his issues. And together with staff, we came up with a number of recommendations to improve those challenges that people find on Visitation. And we met, we were able to put those in a staff report, but then we fit in a meeting with the liaisons at the last minute, at the 11th hour, when the staff report had already been drafted. So, we modified that, and the liaisons had a couple of changes to what was originally recommended. So, we have a number of attachments. We're recommending adding, one of the big issues is double parking. There's also concerns about safety and visibility. And we're hoping that these solutions that are recommended will improve all of those. So, in the first case, at Midtown Market, we know that they're getting very large trucks doing deliveries and sometimes parking on the yellow line on Visitation Avenue, because they don't have a place to stop and unload. So, we're suggesting a loading zone on Mendocino, east of Visitation, at their driveway entrance on Mendocino. And that would only be a loading zone during the hours that they need, on the days of the week that they need, which we have still to finalize and refine if the council wants to proceed. Now, part of that's a driveway, and there's another driveway, so it wouldn't lose very much parking during that time. Then it'd be a loading zone, it would only take one parking space. And it would allow those big trucks to be not parked on Visitation, blocking everyone's view and making you have to
That'd be a huge effort.
Get very close to a car to go around. Second proposal is to add loading zones. Originally, Complete Streets wanted to recommend extending the loading zone next to the Brisbane Inn on Mariposa. That would require that trucks would travel west and then would have to turn to exit and go down Inyo Street. And it might cost a couple of parking spaces to be able to make that turning movement. The liaison suggested a different location instead and that we maintain the short loading zone that's there now. So, that would serve the lower businesses on Visitation. Their change was to move, I'm just going to go a little out of order, but just to connect the two. They suggested a loading zone on Monterey Street, east of Visitation, where Beauty Fix is. And that would serve the middle area of Brisbane, and that would only be operational during the times that there typically are deliveries. And that would also keep the trucks off of Visitation. One of the other problems that was commented on quite a bit was the delivery drivers and people picking up dinners, and that at least one restaurant only has takeout service. So, we're suggesting, and the Complete Streets Committee recommended, and the liaisons refined the locations a little bit of some five-to-10-minute loading zone parking spaces on Visitation. So that people that were coming to pick up food always had a place to get off of the street and not double park to run in and pick up their food. Those are diagrammed on, I don't think I have the right sheets, but they're diagrammed on the attachment. And then we talked a bit about the lack of parking, the lack of there being enough parking, and the fact that we own the teen center, and that's an empty lot. So, both the Complete Streets Committee and the liaisons were interested in recommending making a parking facility at the teen center. That could be timed for people that are visiting town. It could be basically whatever you want. But that was the suggestion, that it would be for people that are visiting Visitation, that maybe it's a two-hour parking location. And if the council wanted to proceed with that, we would have to cost that out, because at the time, we didn't, we didn't have the time to really figure out exactly what would be required to maintain that. Now, one of the issues is enforcement of all of that parking that people are not complying with right now. And we had, the Complete Streets Committee had a presentation from MPS, who manufactures safety sticks, is what they're called, right? And this is a unit that can be installed without, it doesn't need power, it just needs Wi-Fi, and it will record how long, it's placed at each parking space. It'll record how long someone is at that parking space. So, if you designate a five- or 10-minute loading zone, it will collect that data and send it to the police. Police review that data and can issue a ticket. So, it doesn't take the labor, it doesn't take police having to be at the right place at the right time in the beginning and the end of the time period that you're supposed, that you're allowed to park in that spot. So, it would allow us to actually manage those spaces and have enforcement on them, instead of just having a sign that never, people don't follow, because they know it, there aren't enough police to come enforce it.
But you mean that ticket would be at the discretion of the police officer?
Yes, yes, so they would have to review that data and confirm that that was a citable offense. So, we were, the discussion, the recommendation is just to do that at these particular loading zone spaces at this time, to kind of test it out at those spots, versus everywhere up and down Visitation.
Got it, got it, all right. Thank you, Karen. Liaison, Councilmember Mackin and Kern, if you wanted to add to Karen's staff report and comments and questions. I see a hand is being raised by Councilmember Mackin, so I'll let you start.
Interesting that you can spend a long meeting going through this and still have questions. But now I have questions, things that we hadn't discussed. Number one, and this is kind of to, I'm going to punt first to Commander Garcia. When we had residents complaining about safety on Visitation, and I will echo this, the illegal U-turns. And I had asked you months ago if we could actually make it illegal to do U-turns, because there are two types. There's the 500 feet, you can see in either direction, perfectly legal. There are mid-block U-turns. And nothing in this proposal stops that.
Well, it's a double yellow, right? So, you shouldn't be able to do a U-turn on a double
Happens all the time.
Yeah, but it's still illegal, it's already illegal, right?
Got it, got it. I'm just saying, there's nothing in the proposal to stop it. So, the people that are doing the U-turns in the intersections are also really dangerous, because you've got crosswalks on four corners. Is there any way to say you can't do any U-turns there? Across, because even you've got, you've got double-yellow lines, people are crossing just to park on the other side.
You have no U-turn at Visitation and Mariposa right now.
Correct. So, through the mayor, let me jump in really quickly. I'll talk about the law, and then Commander Garcia can talk about the enforcement of it. So, from the city engineer's perspective, it was the council's wish to have no U-turns at each of the street intersections, all the major minor street intersections going to Vis. I have no problem with that at all. That does not bother me in any way, shape, or form. As a couple of member, the council members have already pointed out, it is illegal to make that turn across the double-yellow line unless you are turning into a driveway. And I'll turn the enforcement over to my colleague.
So, in regards to the turning into a driveway, the U-turn statute says that you have to complete turn the direction. So, unless they make a U-turn, cross the double yellow and make a left, and they're going back two spots, they've completely made the turn. But if they're lucky enough to get a spot where they make the turn, they haven't technically made, changed their direction yet, so it's not considered a U-turn, and you can't turn into that spot.
Okay, since the parking, if you were going uphill Visitation, and you saw one of those diagonal parking spots open, and you crossed the double-yellow line, you are turning to go
Correct, but
East, which is a complete change of direction.
Yes, and no, if they, again, if you make it relative close enough to that, you haven't completely changed the direction of your headlights, it would be arguable that they have not changed direction of the vehicle yet. They basically went into the spot.
So, the U-turn enforcement, really what we have available to us is in the intersections themselves. Okay, so, other questions. These loading zones proposed, what parameters are there on loading zones? Because we got some feedback already, just with this being on the agenda. And some people said trucks are going to double park anyway. So, my question is, if this is, if, let's say you have a sign there and it says loading zone, is it going to say trucks only? Can cars park there? And so, if cars can park there and trucks, what happens when the truck comes to unload and there's cars parked in it? And they say, "Oh, I'm unloading a car with supplies for whatever." Or, "I'm using the loading zone, because I'm going to go get my food, and I'm going to load it up into my car." How do, how do we preserve real loading zones for trucks? Which, if that's what we're trying to do, and we're making them available for cars, or we hadn't talked about distinguishing who is able to use these spots, not to mention if it's MPS safety sticks, how do they distinguish between a truck and a car? Or can they?
I'm sorry, we're playing rochambeau here a little bit. Your questions are cross-disciplinar, so we're trying to get you the best answer.
I mean, honestly, we hadn't thought of these before. And just with your presentation, I thought of them and went, "We're opening a little can of worms."
Well, I'll take a shot first on the, on the loading zones. On the loading zones, you have an incredible amount of leeway. You can specify hours, you can specify time limit, we can specify gross vehicle weight rating.
So, are you talking, some of the loading zones near food establishments might say customer loading and unloading only, so that you'd get Uber and Lyft? Versus, another loading zone would say truck-loading zone only?
And I would see those two completely different, yes, along those lines. So, the ones for the customers only?
Must have so many axles like San Francisco that will give you tickets based on how many axles are on the truck.
Right, so the ones that are designed for pickup are going to be of such a length that you're not going to get a truck in there anyway. Those are going to be the 24-foot spaces, and that's what they're designed for. So, the other loading zones, and thank you for helping us with that, because I think it's an important distinction, the other loading zones are intended to be truck-loading zones.
Commercial vehicles would be the statement.
Yes, I think that's a fair statement to describe it, sure.
Okay. And can I make a comment as well? Or you want me to wait on a comment? Okay, I would just say, having gone through this Tomas Avenue parking permit program, my inclination right now with, again, we have everyone going, we want safety on Visitation, and already, I'm getting emails, pushback of, "This is never going to work, they're all going to double park anyway." So, I would make this a test program. I wouldn't even go into the MPS sticks. I would see what happens, because if we go through all of this and end up with trucks that continue to double park, we've wasted our time.
Councilmember Kern?
That was a tough one to follow, okay. I'm going to start out by saying I agree. This should be considered a test, whatever we move forward with.
Wait, 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 are we asking questions, or are we in discussion? Because I feel like now we're getting into discussion.
Well, you know, they are the liaison, so I just asked them if they wanted to share what they had in their meeting. Right, what they discussed and what they came out with.
Yes. Yes. Councilmember Mackin is correct. We did discuss all these things. Karen, your report was very complete, thank you so much. We walked through each one of these potential solutions, gave feedback. It was a very lengthy, very engaged meeting. And I think we landed in a good space. And I do agree that all of this is a test. So, let me figure that out. So, that was my only comment on the meeting and the subsequent event.
Okay, all right. Do you have questions, Madison?
Yeah, I want to know, did you consult the new owners of former Nana's space? Because I think you mentioned that you would put the loading zone hours based on when Midtown needed it. But I imagine that Nana's, the new people at Nana's are going to need some kind of place too, and their hours might not line up with the hours of what Midtown needs.
Because we didn't get robust feedback from the businesses, we would consider that the next step is to find out what their hours are and what they need. And incorporate that into these loading zones. We, they didn't answer the survey, and then we had our communications staff and our economic vitality staff go talk to people, and we didn't get a lot of specific feedback from that. They were interested in improvements, but they didn't have each business say, "Well, I get deliveries from 10 to 4, and not after that." So, we still need to do that step.
But you had a lot of engagement with Midtown, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I just make one comment to that?
Oh, me too.
Okay, okay. I live across the street from Nana's, and Nana's, given the capacity and size of what the restaurant was, I'm stressing past history, they would unload in their driveway from a van-sized, I don't know what it's called, a pie truck maybe, box truck. So, they didn't have a semi coming in. The loading zone that we were talking about on Mendocino would be for an actual 17-wheeler.
And if I could, one other thing that came out in our meeting is that we also discussed these loading zones could have hours posted. So, they're not the entire day. They might only be 12 to 2, or they might be 8 to 10. And we also discussed that, further discussion with the businesses, where we might ask the businesses, because we want to restrict some of these loading zones to open up for parking, that we find out, when are they getting deliveries? And maybe they should talk to their vendors about, "Look, we can only get deliveries between these hours." So, we're not just carte blanche, removing parking all day on these spots.
Well, getting feedback from the Brisbane Inn, which I'm sure you can get, they don't open until like, what, 4 o'clock? So, you know, their delivery window is probably going to be far later than, let's say, any, any delivery that would like happen at Madhouse, of course.
Yeah, we did talk about that, that they're not even there during the day, so yeah.
All right, Councilmember O'Connell, question?
So, on these recommendations, do we know how many times in a day, week, whatever time period, that there is actually a big beer or soda truck that's delivering to Midtown? Because it's, it doesn't seem that it's very often that there are large trucks making deliveries. 90% of what I've seen with double parkers is parents dropping off at the library, people double park for boba tea, and people double park to pick up their to-go food from Melissa's and
Lucky House.
And Lucky House. And, you know, personally, and I know this is a little bit of discussion, when I do need to make a U-turn, and I will make a U-turn at the intersections, because that's where there's visibility.
That's the safest place.
Not in the middle of the street, even if I were to go for a parking place. I've always considered it illegal, and most vehicles can't make the correct angle to pull right into a thing. They have to make a half-U-turn back up and then park, or park really capiwantis in the parking space. But I think it's very limited times that there's actually a big rig delivering to any of these businesses. It's usually, when I see it, it's, you know, 10 o'clock in the morning, and you could roll a cannon down Visitation. But, you know, to put a designated loading zone there, you're going to be taking away parking of, you know, two to three vehicles for whatever that designated time is, when there may only be two deliveries a week. I think that on the other, these pictures, for me, I have to orientation them because they're completely upside down on how my brain works. You know, again, putting a loading zone just past the library, that would that would be, that's curb-sized pickup, is that in front of the?
It's kind of, yeah, in front of boba, a little bit.
In front of boba tea. Is that where that one is?
Yeah. Yes.
If I, if I may, it would be one spot near the entrance of Melissa's.
Yeah.
One spot north of the driveway in front of lyrical opposition. And then I think the remaining two spots were the first spot outside the chiropractic office, and then the one next to it. Am I correct, Karen?
That's correct, yeah.
This is, the guy's right here, and that's the library.
And, and this is the chiropractic office?
This is the chiropractic office, and this is like kind of a residential.
Okay. And then, I had asked staff about this earlier, when we had talked about the recommendation or the thought of the teen center as a parking lot. And I know that when we looked at leasing the parking lot by, across from the Brisbane Inn, that they were easy to say, okay, well, it's gonna cost us $10,000 to pave, and we'll get nine parking places. And, you know, we could look at that in a very holistic ballpark on what it's gonna cost for parking. And if people are willing to double park, why would they drive all the way around to two blocks from where they're going, which is probably almost as close as their house is to walking to the business? They're still gonna double park instead of driving around to some city-owned parking spot.
Yeah, employees could park there.
And let, well, then it's more than a two-hour limit, it's a eight-hour-a-day thing.
Well, I really feel like this is discussion.
I know, it is discussion.
And I've been really containing myself.
I started myself, that I had asked Jeremy if staff would have a ballpark on what, a renovation of that parking, that area to be a parking place, what it would cost per space in just a ballpark general sense.
It's not, it's not six figures. But it could very well be north of $50,000.
North of?
$50,000.
Okay.
There's just a lot of demo there. And we could certainly try and keep the cost down as low as possible if we wanted to come up with a service that was just relatively impermeable. So we could take something like decomposed granite, or like the aggregate-based, the, the tight material that you put under the asphalt concrete of a roadway that gets very, very hard. So it looks like dirt, but it's very, very hard, water can't go through it, you'd have to just paint.
And do we have an idea of how many parking places could be on that piece of ground?
A dozen. Which is, which is similar to what we thought we could get over across from the BI.
Okay, thank you.
And to answer your question earlier, ma'am, if, if I may, you wanted to know, do we know when these trucks are here? We don't. Probably some of the best information we have is from the folks at Midtown, because that gentleman did show up at one of the Complete Streets Safety Committee meetings, very helpful. But also what we heard from them as well is that he can't always guarantee the days and the hours when the trucks are gonna be there. So if, if putting those sorts of loading spaces in was something the council wanted us to do, we would absolutely have to go out to all those businesses and get a read. And I, what you would end up with, if this is what you wanted, to have these loading zones, you will find time periods that there will be days, there will be hours, when it's restricted to trucks only, that nothing will be parked there. Because it's just a matter of, you know, if you're taking deliveries from the East Bay, you don't know what's gonna happen on the bridge, right? So a truck could be delayed by an hour or more because of something. So it's, it's, we can't define it down to within a 10-minute, or even within a one-hour block period, I don't think.
I have a question. There is that yellow zone in front of the Brisbane Inn, but there was another yellow, a yellow zone, like next to the Plug Preserve. Is that still there?
No, it's not. So what happened there, ma'am, was that when the owners of that property, just behind the Plug Preserve, came in, they actually owned the Plug Preserve. And you'll recall that we had a license to put the fire hydrants there, and they told us, hey, the license has expired, take them out. So we took them out, and then part of the development of their home, their driveway, had entered where that loading zone used to be, so it just went.
Got it.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more.
Okay.
Oh, you do too?
No, no, just good question, Councilmember Data.
Just one more question, staff, and, and I know you didn't get a whole lot of response from business owners. I've been told, so this is third-hand, that there are a lot of business owners that are parking in the spaces in front of their establishments. And I think, did we talk to them about that? Because that's part of the parking problem. And if, if they want customers to patronize them, they need to free up those spaces. So, the question would be, where are the employees and owners of these businesses parking? Did we ever cross that bridge yet? And I, and I'm not criticizing if you didn't. And, and one thing I would share with, with my colleagues, and Frank knows this, this is still a work in progress. What you see tonight is not like we're voting on this, it's just an update. And it's to solicit your input and suggestions.
So, let me, let me take a shot on that, if I will, ma'am, and not answer your question directly. Part of the challenge, excuse me, that we have with parking, is that parking restrictions and parking meters are not intended to be a revenue-generating item. They're not intended to be enforcement, they're not intended to be punitive, they're intended to maximize the amount of parking space. And so that's why you put two-hour signage in there, because you're trying to roll it over. And that's why many of the larger cities have parking meters. And they vary on what they charge, you go to Burlingame, it's like a quarter for half an hour or something. They're not charging a lot, they're just trying to get you to move the car. So, to address your concern, I think what would be more likely to happen would be to put the MIP sticks, the MPS sticks, up and down there and enforce the two-hour corridor that's in there. And that would get the turnover going on. But then it does beg the next question, like, so what's the ripple effect of throwing that stone into the pond? Well, now the, the employees who have been parking, now have to find a place to park. Do we have parking somewhere else for them? Does, does that mean we, we do the, we convert the teen center site into a parking site, but then you put a two-hour parking limit on it, and then those employees are shuffling cars, right? It's a really fascinating discussion, but, but you never know what the, what the unintended consequences are gonna be. And part of what I really appreciate about the discussion the council's having now is that absolutely this can be temporary. We're just talking about paint on curbs and signs on posts. I can bag a sign overnight, I can, I can paint a yellow curb gray the next day, and it, and we can restore it back to its use. So, if there are things that you wanna do, tho, those are not cost issues for the Public Works Department of the city. Those are things that we can do really quickly and, and quite nimbly.
I have a question. So, is staff's recommendation right now is just to have the sticks for the new zones, or all of visitation? And have all of visitation be two-hour?
The recommendation that came from Complete Streets was just for the five or 10-minute zones.
You know, because we have 24-minute zones, and we've had those for a very long time, and nobody parks there for 24 minutes. They're all, they're, they're people who live in the apartment building right across the street, they park their cars there. And then, you know, what happens that I can say for Madhouse is that Madhouse has a parking lot. And, um, the employees that work at Madhouse try to park on visitation so that there is parking always for people in the parking lot who wanna visit Madhouse. Because if there isn't, then those people go and they block driveways, and they double park, and everyone gets mad. And so, you know, for businesses that do have parking, they try to make that available for, so it's like, it, you know, it goes with ways. Oh, well, if the people who work on visitation are parking on visitation, sometimes that's to create parking somewhere else. So, it's, it's all a trade-off. You start pulling one string, and here goes the other string. Like, there's no, there's always going to be someone who's disappointed. But right now, we do have 24-minute parking, and it airs, it's hard to enforce that, right? The police can't be everywhere all the time. Everyone over there has learned that, and nobody respects the 24-minute. And if there were, I mean, there was Hilltop there before, now there's not that kind of business where it's in and out. But certainly at Madhouse, right? If there, and there is parking at Madhouse, but if those 24-minute zones were free, it would make sure that there are people who, now there's ample space and they're not blocking driveways, but then the trade-off is that residents may not have places to park either. And then you get into the whole discussion about that apartment building has a lot of garages. And are people parking their cars in those garages? Or are they filling their garages with stuff and then parking in the 24-minute? Anyway.
Any other questions for staff? Alright, I, I do have one question, and it's the MPS safety stick. So, um, how many cities in Seminole County utilize those?
Currently, nobody does right now. Nobody does.
Friend setter.
They are soon to be installed in two cities that I am aware of, is Sarah Madre and Palm Desert. But as of right now, they have not made it to California, but they are on the way.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Got it, got it, okay.
And what is the, what, I know that allegedly, the safety, one of the brochures we got about them was that they put them in at no charge, but they get the fees.
So they put them in at no charge, but it's a 50-50 revenue share. So if our tickets were 40, which they are, then they would get 50% of that, and that's how they recover their cost of their equipment.
Okay. And then, you know, in the, the feedback that was received from, from residents, you know, we addressed some of it, double parking and illegal U-turns, lack of parking availability. But then there was also speeding and failure to stop at stop signs. So, um, yeah, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't really see anything in, in this, uh, uh, report from Complete Streets. But, so what, what are some of the things that they're recommending for reducing the speeding and, and getting folks to stop at the stop signs?
Complete Streets, did, Complete Streets did not come up with anything on their own to do that, to reduce the speeding.
Okay, okay.
If I'm, if I may, um, I think Jeremy did a, um, they did a survey on San Bruno Avenue. Can you highlight the results of that? He did a traffic study, and I think he gave them to us.
Yep.
Can you give a brief highlight of that?
I can give a brief overview of that. So we put the Gemar, we called Gemar out there for two weeks, and 85% of the vehicles were under 25 miles an hour.
So 85% are going the speed lim, under the speed limit or the speed limit?
Yeah, I believe they are, they were ranging between 20 and 25.
There was also a statistic about people who actually stopped at the stop signs?
No, not that I'm aware of from that Gemar.
It was, the statistic was the people that were eligible for a citation, because they were going more than five miles per hour over the speed limit.
It was like 3%, 2%.
That's the figure.
So really, we have, when we did the study, we actually saw that most people were in compliance with the speed limit.
That's correct.
And the traffic laws, as far as we could tell.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
And then on, on the U-turns in a downtown detail zone, you know, and I, I'm just going off of memory, you know, taking the, the driver's license test. Is that legal to make a U-turn on Visitation Avenue in the intersection?
Currently, it is, yes.
It is okay to make it, unless it's posted?
Correct.
Okay, alright, I just, just wanted to double-check on that. Okay, so, um.
One more question. On the MPS sticks, if we're looking at this as a test, do we know, are there contract parameters? So that if we say we're gonna do this as a test, we're not signing a five-year contract?
So there are general parameters, but in talking to the sales rep and their VP, we can definitely take the contract, redline it, see what works for us, and they, they, they'd definitely be receptive to that. The initial agreement is three years. Generally, they look at getting at least five citations per device per month. And if it, the behavior stops, then we can renegotiate, and either we get rid of them and send them back, or we keep them, or we move them somewhere else.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, I'd like to add too, that if the council wishes, we could make this a little less specific. If the council wants us to continue to explore parking enforcement options, there is another one that we're looking at, is a company called Laz that does work on the peninsula currently, including South San Francisco. I've had, staff's had communication with them. And we're in the process of getting some information back from them on what that would look like. Very different system, they u, they utilize a vehicle to come by using like ALPR-type technology, does a scan, and then issues tickets from there.
Oh, interesting, okay. So, um, let's open it up to the public. Any members, I see Paul from Complete Streets. Paul, do you wanna say anything? No, you're all good. Michelle, do you wanna, are you good? Okay, come on up, please.
We'd have way less parking problems in Brisbane if we actually enforced the current laws, which we don't. And, uh, when, earlier we were talking about the parking test, you know, everything. One of the things I see all the time is vehicles on the street, parked on the street, in, in public parking places that do not have valid current registration for California. And they're not ticketed, and they're, they're till grass grows around them, you know? On Visitation Avenue, I make a U, legal U-turns in the intersection, and having that not be available would be a really bad idea, because that would force people to make turns and go through the neighborhoods, and that's not how it should be. They should be making safe U-turns at the intersection. I stop at the stop sign, and then when it's clear, I go out, I make sure it's still clear, and I make my U-turn, and then head back home. But making a, a semi-U-turn across the double-yellow line for a parking place, Mario, I, I looked up the law, 'cause Dan got a $250 ticket one time in South San Francisco for making a U-turn over the double-yellow line on Grant Avenue to get a parking place. And so I looked up the law, and you can make a partial U-turn over a double-yellow line, of course, to go into a driveway or into a parking place, like Mario explained. But in South San Francisco, they have a law that you can't do that, in addition to the California state law.
Interesting.
So we might have to enact a law that you cannot make a U-turn over the double-yellow line to go into a parking place. And when I used to work at the Public Library in Brisbane, when it was next to Midtown, people would do that, and we would ticket them. And then people stopped doing it. And, uh, and that was, it was like that for a long time. And then we do not have two-hour parking posted on Visitation Avenue, anywhere on Visitation Avenue. And I think that we should have two-hour parking from 8:00 AM till 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, period. And it should be enforced. That green Volkswagen in front of, um, the pizza parlor, I'm sorry, however cute it is, it's been there off and on for almost two years. For close to a year, it was there with a tow bar on it, facing out with a tow bar on it. And now, and then it went away for a little while, it came back, it doesn't have a tow bar, but it's still there, and it's there all the time. And it's taking up a valuable parking place, they're storing their Volkswagen, it doesn't, I don't know if it's operational or not, but that's not right. It's just not right. And when I went to the hairdresser, he complained because a car across the street was there for 10 days. And he finally called, and the police came, and then they ticketed, they did whatever. And, but then he felt really like, uh, weird, because he asked the police not to tell the person who called, but they did. And then he felt really awkward and very, uh, you know, like, oh my God, somebody's gonna come after me because I, I told them about this car parking there for 10 days. So, we don't enforce the laws that we already have with people parking on the main street. Should be two-hour parking, and we should enforce it. However, you know, however we do that, get people moving, and they're not storing cars on Visitation Avenue and other streets around town. And if we did have a parking lot at the teen center, we'd need to have some kind of pathway that goes through to Visitation, otherwise it really, like you said, it'd be like a slung walk is coming from home. And airport parking is still a problem in Brisbane, regardless of the taxis and, and that type of thing. A lot of times, it's people letting their friends, friends and family park there. And I don't, I get asked all the time, and I'm like, no, we have a parking problem. Here, let me give you a coupon for a park-and-ride, you know? And people storing their cars on the street. And there is one truck that parks on Visitation a lot, and they stick out, they're diagonally parked, but it's such a big truck, it sticks out into the lane of traffic.
Yes.
So, and then the other thing, well, this is my laundry list. The new parking lot, parking areas that where you're not supposed to park for visibility, and we put those cool little things out there. You can't see those cool little things, and so people just park over them anyway, because they don't even know what those are there for. And so, really, if we're gonna do that, we should paint those curbs red, because I see people park there all the time, and they don't know. And that you, oh, what, oh, what is that? And that you, oh, what, oh, what is that? You know, they don't know what that is, so, especially if they're from out of town. Um, that's about it. I do like the idea of a loading zone, and I don't think we should put any more, um, of those water catch basins in the parking areas on Visitation, 'cause we already have a real problem there, and all of a sudden, a new one appeared right around, right next to, um, Michael Abney's thing on the side street, took up two parking places. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Michelle. All right, um, Councilmember Mackin?
Uh, one other consideration, just, just to make it even more complicated for you, is if we had solely two-hour parking during the daytime on Visitation, we don't have as many businesses on Visitation as we used to. We have a lot of residences, and the recent approvals from the Planning Commission have been developments that have a storefront, that there's no storefront.
Yep.
And so there's, there are sometimes three units in there, and they're, they're not gonna have three cars, they're gonna have six or seven.
Yep.
And so if there's a two-hour parking everywhere on Visitation, they're gonna come around the corner to the side streets, and we've already lost a whole bunch of parking on the other side streets because of the new twenty-foot rule. So I think somewhere in there, we need to figure out how many residents we have and how many cars they have on Visitation, and we've not approached that either, and I think we need to do that.
Okay, um, I have, uh, CMF, uh, online, so, uh, you have the floor, so please unmute yourself and, you can make your comments.
Yeah, this is Chris Flarkowski, and, um, I cannot comment without mentioning in relationship to parking, the other side of parking is public transportation. We're gonna continue to have this problem with parking so long as we continue to expand on cars and not give people other options. But, um, in terms of double parking, um, I have to say it's not just in the afternoons, and it's ju, not just for a few hours, it really depends on when you walk down the street. Those big vehicles early in the morning, they're there, and they are double parking. And it's, it's often when people are leaving for work, which makes the situation even more dangerous. In terms of commercial versus residential, if we want a lively, commercial street, I understand we want also to have mixed use on, on Visitation, but we can't lose sight of the importance of continuing to support the business, and, and that's where two-hour parking, or maybe not two-hour, you could extend it a little bit. I, I don't know how long it takes people to get their hair done, but, um, keep in mind, we want it to be mixed, and we want to be able to support different uses of the street. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. All right, um, so for staff, so the, Jeremy, um, you and I had talked about the red dots, and, um, yeah, you know, you see people parking in those spaces. And I had shared that image with you, uh, it was a link, maybe, um, regarding the, the program in San Francisco, volunteer program where, uh, kids were part of, uh, an effort, volunteer effort to paint, uh, the, the, uh, the curbs red to promote the daylighting lot, right? And so, I know that's something that you've been thinking about, and that, um, could be part of a volunteer program, yeah, in, in our near future. All right, I see you nodding there, and, um, you know, like the, the yellow, the yellow zo, loading zone, uh, you're right, they, they do park at different times. But there is, it does seem like the morning is when you get most of the big trucks. So you try and capture perhaps m, most of the big truck traffic, and there's gonna be sometimes when, I guess, they will double park in the afternoon because maybe that spot isn't open because now it's, uh, open for, uh, just regular cars. But I, I think we've, we've given staff a lot of great information and feedback. I, is there anything else that, uh?
Have we moved into discussion now?
Well, it seems like we were kinda like going in and out of it.
Was very, very unclear in this particular topic.
I think we should have less, a last call for public comment, because there's a lot of people who are here, and some people wrote to us, and I imagine there's probably more people who would like to say something.
Well, you know, th, they can if they wanna raise their hand.
There's a hand raised.
Uh, yeah, she, she made the last comment.
She went already.
Yeah.
So should we do a last call? Anyone else?
May I make a suggestion?
Okay.
We're not gonna solve this tonight. I, I don't think the public is aware of potential changes. I would suggest this go back to Complete Streets, recapping all of this discussion, get some other recommendations, bring it back to the council with, here's a proposal, A, B, and C, and then have the public come back and voice their opinions through a public hearing, publicize it in city media, and see where we go with it.
I haven't gotten to discuss anything.
Yeah, okay, if, if you've, no, I, I don't wanna deny you of that, Councilmember Davis, so, um, yeah, so what, what's, share us your, your thoughts.
Well, I, I think that there should be phases to this if we did do something, because if we learned anything from Thomas, it's that when you implement a program, everyone says they didn't know about it, and they did not sign up for it. So I would say we'd start with loading zones for trucks and loading zones for, you know, cars to pick up from restaurants. Five minutes seems ridiculous. No one's in and out in five minutes. Ten minutes seems more appropriate, or fifteen. And I would say that for the parking lot at Teen Center, that's really gonna come, that's gonna come in handy when the Montessori school comes in. And so while that might not alleviate problems on Visitation, I think that parking lot's gonna be necessary for parents picking up kids, and I could see a whole double parking situation happening now over there, especially during, especially bad during the, uh, farmers markets, and so that is going to be necessary for us to support that business and, and.
So, so one, one of the things though about the Teen Center, and we've talked about this for years, is that eventually that would become some affordable housing project. So if we're gonna, you know, consider it as a parking lot, then maybe it should be, you know, a temporary one, until we kind of figure out if that is, if that site is something that we want to use for.
Of course, right now, it's not being utilized at all.
It's not utilized at all, right?
We can cross that bridge later.
But if it's utilized as a temporary, uh, parking lot, then I think that would be appropriate. But of course, it's gonna, there's gonna be costs too.
But, uh, on, dovetailing on, on, um, the Montessori school, aren't they required to have a plan for their pickup and traffic? And is that reliant on the city to provide that?
They're required through their permitting process to have drop-off and pickup, so they're, right, I think we're still working with them on an appropriate location. Is that correct, Randy?
That, that's correct. We're still working with them on a loading zone, but I, but I understand the concern is that some, somebody shows up at a different time, and there are people waiting to get into the loading zone, so yes.
It's gonna be helpful. We have a lot of events at the park, Look at Pride and Joy, people are parked crazy. I think that, like, yeah, it's maybe not gonna serve Visitation very well, but it'll serve the park, and we have our, a lot of challenges over there anyway, so I think that that's like low-hanging fruit, it's unutilized land, we can, it can have a higher and better purpose without hardly any, like, that much money spent. And if we wanna do something else with the property, we totally can. Right now, it's just pretty much useless, and people are parking there anyway. We could fit a lot more cars if we just took the chain link fence down and kind of leveled it out. So, um, I think that, you know, I totally agree with Councilmember Mackin, that was gonna be my comment. I lived in a building that was on Visitation, and the building I lived in had no parking at all. Eight units, not a single stitch of parking, and so, uh, a lot of the tenants in the building I lived in parked on Visitation. And so I think then you maybe start exploring what does a permit program look like for people who live on Visitation, analyzing those buildings, how much parking is there, and determining who would get a permit. If you live in a unit that has a dedicated garage or dedicated space, then do you get one? Do you get none? A lot of questions around that, and obviously now is not the time to sort that out, but I think that's critical. There were the humps that were brought up on Visitation, that's something that was brought up in the last discussion. What were, humps is not the right word, but.
Speed bumps.
They were some kind of raised intersections, so.
Raised crosswalks.
That I think, you know, we could, if we wanna enhance safety for pedestrians, that might be fair. I think you absolutely need to make, have U-turns allowed. It's, I think, it's a burden not to be able to do one on Mariposa. I understand why, because of the way that, that new crosswalk came in, okay? But I think that if you don't have that, you're gonna encourage all kinds of even worse behavior. People putting in, pulling into other people's driveways on side streets. And you see this when you, you make that right-hand turn going out of Brisbane, and you're getting on, on Bay Shore, and everywhere you go, no U-turn, no U-turn, no U-turn, no U-turn, you gotta go forever, and then finally you say, forget this. I'm just gonna be illegal, right? And that's what's gonna happen here. So I think that's gonna create far more danger than anything else. The trucks, I think the trucks will utilize loading zones. I know that Ma, um, Midtown would ensure that their drivers, their delivery drivers do that. So I know we talked about Brisbane Inn, the other one is Julie's. Julie's has a lot of trucks. I think that the loading zone, um, next to.
Brisbane Inn.
Um, not Br, Brisbane Inn, that's gonna be the smaller one. The other one is gonna be by Beauty Fix, little bit of a ways away. I don't know that that's necessarily gonna.
The Brisbane Inn one should be close enough for Julie's.
Yes, but it's a smaller, it's, it's a smaller zone, right? It's gonna be, it can't accommodate a semi. I don't know how many semis really deliver to, to Julie's, but.
If it's across from the Brisbane Inn is where the picture is, right?
Mm-hmm.
How are they gonna get facing the right direction?
Yeah, that could be only for small trucks.
Be able to get in that right direction unless they.
Turn.
Go up the big, I mean, i- it's gonna be really.
No, ma'am, ma'am, it's, it's right adjacent to the Brisbane Inn. So a truck to get in there would be coming up Visitation Avenue, they make a right-hand turn onto Mariposa.
And then where do they go?
Well, the challenge to get out is they'd have to turn on Inyo.
You're right.
But the, but the size of the loading zones, if I understand it, the council is trying to restrict it, so those are not tractor-trucks in there. So it's the trucks that I, I look at, they're bread truck size, they're, uh, beer truck, water delivery trucks.
Not the beer truck.
No, the beer truck would fit in the existing loading zone, sure.
And can turn onto Inyo?
Yes.
So that might be weird. Anyway, um, I, I think that the, the comment about, oh, well, the trucks, they're, they're in and out, they're not there long, and so should we be taking up like a whole loading zone for all day when it's a quick thing? And it's tremendously dangerous. I, far more dangerous than somebody double parking to get boba, in my opinion, because the semi truck is so long that you have to make sure you really have the clearance to skirt around it, and then if you have a pedestrian come out, you're trying to go fast because someone else might turn around the corner and not see you, and you get in a jam. So while it's unfortunate that it might take up parking that could be utilized all day, I do feel that those trucks pose one of the biggest safety concerns, especially if someone's crossing the street. You can't see, you go around, um, so if, if, I think that that's a really low-hanging fruit, because I don't think it's gonna be difficult to get a truck to comply with that. They want to just come and pull in an easy spot. I imagine, I'm not a truck driver, but I imagine if you had a place that was just easy to pull in, and you, you weren't sweating bullets, you know, being double parked in front of a business. I also know that the Midtown truck got a ticket, and it caused big hullabaloo. And so this is the solution, the, I mean, they've threatened not to deliver anymore. Their vendor said, you know what, we come here, we get tickets, and I don't think we're gonna service your business. And so they were up in arms like, wow, we can't operate if we can't get deliveries, and there's no way we can accommodate this vehicle in our parking lot. So I think that this will be very effective. I also think that the loading zones will be effective only if they're enforced. And you see what happens with the twenty-four minute. Eventually, people realize that it's not serious, and they don't comply. But I do have, I mean, like, I, I, I don't know that I like, I don't know that I like the solution of the automatic tickets either, 'cause it feels kind of gross, and it gets.
We don't have the staff.
I know, I know, and so I, and then we, we got comments about that as well, pub, um, sent to us, and so I'm, I really am receptive to those concerns also. I think that, like, the three-year commitment seems, I don't, I don't like, they, will they let us do a test?
One hundred percent, yes. We can beta-test it for however long we want, yes.
So I think we need to come back on that. I think we need to come back on if it's appropriate to do some kind of study to figure out how many of these vehicles are residents, if there is a way to get that information, who live on Visitation. How many of these are business owners? Like, the hairdresser, right? He, where's he gonna park? He comes to work at his business eight hours a day, and where do we expect him to go? Is it not fair that somebody who ha, who has a business should be able to park in front of their business? It's a different thing if somebody is there, leaving their car there as their permanent car storage, and just because their business is there doesn't mean that they get to leave their car there for a year. That's a different issue. So phases, I think it needs, we need to communicate with the community heavily on this. And I think that it could yield great results, but I, I think that it, we're gonna get a lot of heat, because whenever you give a ticket, everyone's mad.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I have one other question.
Yeah, sure.
Staff, one other thing we talked about in our meeting with liaisons was we have a restriction on semis just going through our city streets arbitrarily. And so I think it would be worthwhile to find out from the businesses who's getting deliveries that are semi tractor trucks? Is it one business only? Because we can also say, sorry, they're not allowed. You're gonna have to make other arrangements. If that's the big issue is the semis.
Yeah.
And, and we, we don't know how many people are getting deliveries.
But is that anti-business? Like, could that, could that mean that you put some, somebody like Midtown out of business because you say you can't have semis?
In San Francisco, they make restrictions on trucks and where they deliver and what sizes, so businesses cope. I mean, it's, it's, y, y, you've got a trade-off. You, you said it yourself that those create one of the biggest hazards.
They do.
So do we wanna address it, or just say, well, whatever happens, happens?
Well, I think the solution totally addresses it. I, I think that saying no semis at all in Brisbane is like a little bit extreme. I think that this is a solution that acknowledges, uh, s, safety and provides a safe place for vehicles, for semis, but also, you know, allows businesses to operate as normal, and they're all located in places that could serve the businesses that need those deliveries.
And we'd find out in a test.
Oh, we would.
Yeah.
All right, any more discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna call out, um, the eighteen-wheelers. So this, uh, this proposed parking spot on Mendocino, and this was a great call-out by Karen, and I did not know this, maybe this is a fun fact for the whole council, that you can, um, use a daylighting spot as a loading zone. You cannot park a car in a daylighting spot, but you can use it as a loading zone. So if you take a look at the Mendocino overhead, uh, picture that you've been provided, the first spot is a daylighting spot, so we're not losing any parking there, 'cause it's an illegal spot anyhow. The second one is just space for motorcycles. The third one is the driveway, and the fourth one is another car, so we're only technically losing two full spaces.
Yeah.
And one motorcycles, and so, um, I'm a massive fan of this solution. To dovetail on Council Madison or Council Davis's, um, observation about the dangers of the semi, when the semis are parked facing northbound, uh, north of the driveway to get out of Midtown Market, if you're making a right-hand turn, you are making a blind right-hand turn into oncoming traffic, and I think it's the most dangerous situation that we have on Visitation, and I think that this truck loading zone solves for that.
Agree.
Regarding the temporary spots, I know that, uh, in conversations with Karen during our session, they were coming forward and recommending four spots for food pickup and delivery on Visitation. I think we could test with less than that if we wanted to, and we would just really need to designate them, food pickup, delivery, whatever we wanna call it. There's a bunch of different things we could put on the signage. I think it's a great op, I think it's a great opportunity to test out one of those parking sticks. Be it for five minutes, be it for seven minutes, be it for nine and a half minutes, you guys can determine what that is.
So I'm curious, Frank. So if we had one of those parking sticks, does it have to be for curbside meal pickup? Or could it just be a ten-minute zone?
It could be a ten-minute zone, but we have to come up with creative signage.
Right, 'cause you know you gotta get out in ten minutes if you're gonna get a ticket.
People in a library, they're trying to get their kid, hey, come on, we gotta go, return a book, pick up a book.
Yeah.
I think like, you can't, how are you gonna track what somebody did? You know, they're just. You know, they're just, are they there longer than the time? Okay, ticket. But I think that we should, if we do that, we should have signers that said, automatic tickets will be issued. So people know, hey, I can't fool around here.
Um, and that-
Get a ticket.
One more thing, and I hope that some people laugh at this, but I think we should implement a program, city manager in the city of Brisbane, that we bring a sign in, a sign goes out. Because this city has got more signs than we know what to do with.
That would be the second city I've been city manager in where I've gotten that guidance. So, uh, you're in good company.
So on, on that, uh, curbside pickup, should it be, I know you mentioned like fifteen minutes, you might need fifteen minutes.
I think it could be ten and you give a five-minute grace. Like, if, and, and the police say, okay, well, they were there for fifteen minutes, or they were there, you know, twelve minutes. You have a little bit of, you give a little bit of grace, but once you get over that, that seems a little bit ridiculous.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not particularly concerned about what the enforcement is, so I'm not gonna weigh in on an opinion there. But what I will say is it's going to give us a ton of data, and we should be able to beta test for free. And be like, give us a sticker too, we're gonna test this out. We wanna be the first city in California. We're gonna use this for our delivery, uh, parking spaces, so.
So, i- i- if you would indulge us just for a moment, because there was a lot of discussion, um, related to this. I, I think it would make some sense for us to go through each of these items one more time to understand that we've captured it. And that we can then go have a successful engagement with the Complete Streets Committee i- from there. So I think we're gonna, we're gonna try to tighten this up just a wee bit more, that work for staff, okay?
All right, and you know, before we do that, Jeremy, if, uh, if I can get a motion to extend the meeting past, uh, you know-
Past nine, is it past nine or nine?
It's nine o'clock right now. So, well, that's right, I guess we're good at nine thirty, so I'm sorry. Okay, so I think we, we can still get in there. Okay.
Yeah.
Keep going.
So let's, um, which, uh, which report would you guys prefer to go through to use as the template here to? The, 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 you wanna use the supplementary?
You, use the supplemental one, just by the way.
Okay. So I'm working off the supplemental report, page two. And there are five bullet points listed there. So we just wanna go through each of these and make sure what's, what's changed. So, bullet one. Any additional changes? Or things that you'd like this committee to consider? Does that capture where the council, collective council is right now?
Yeah, I think so.
I'm just curious though, um, do, do we want to limit the, the hours? To say only in the morning, or do you wanna do it all, uh, business hours?
I, I think we need to contact the businesses and get more information. We don't have enough information yet, and we'll find that out.
Figure that, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so for this, we're, we're going to take this, this is the, um, direction of council, but we're going to do the additional outreach with businesses. Okay, great. Number two.
And this is bullet one on page two of two of the revised report.
Yes, sir.
Designate a loading zone on Monterey Street, stressing once again, Monterey Street. Eastbound of Visitation next to Beauty Fix, for whom?
I think we're on two of six, right?
Yeah.
So that's, uh-
Well, Beauty Fix, that would be for the Eagles.
That's a fair question.
Beauty Fix would be for the Eagles.
Yeah, I, I understand, Terry. I'm familiar with the location, but I'm just confused, cause I don't remember discussing this.
Sir, my recollection was that was the substitution for having the expanded truck zone at Mariposa. It was suggested that it go up so that it's across from the, uh, the side street entrance to the library.
I just think that if, who, if, who is it serving, right? Like, if it's serving the Brisbane Inn, if it's serving-
It's not gonna serve anybody there, and then we're gonna expect one of those drivers to push
They won't.
Beer and water uphill?
No.
They won't.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm not familiar with this. I, I don't remember discussing this.
We discussed it very, very lightly in this meeting, but-
Anyhow, I don't know, I don't support that.
I think that it would be good to know, it'd be really good to know what size trucks deliver to the Brisbane Inn and Julie's. Because if they're of a smaller scale and they can utilize the loading zone next to the Brisbane Inn and comfortably make that turn onto Inyo, we may not need that one.
Agreed.
On Monterey.
Yes.
So, that's key. And if that is supposed to be the loading zone for a big truck, but it's serv- serving those two businesses, I don't see them using that. I see them just double parking.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Too far away.
Agreed.
Yep.
Otherwise, if it's a big, big truck, then we might need to revisit taking out some spots on Mariposa around Inyo so that a truck can make that turn. And so, you know, you're sacrif- you're swapping the spots from, from Monterey and you're taking them out over there.
But without our meeting, what came up, and, and this was my bugaboo, if I lived in Inyo, which is a narrow street, would you want
No, I'd be so pissed.
Going down your street?
No.
Cause you've got parked cars too, that-
It's tight.
You know what also they do though? What they do is they go straight up and they get to the top of Mariposa. And then they have a problem.
Big problem.
And they try to turn
Yeah.
Right, they try to turn left. I know somebody who lives on the corner of Solano and Mariposa, they totally took out their whole fence, yard retaining wall thing. So, then you get into, should this be a one-way situation? There's a lot of accidents up there. Trucks get stuck in that little spot, so.
So, i- if I may, Mayor, i- if you'd indulge me, I don't feel like the council thinks it has enough information on truck loading zones information right now. So if you would like staff to go back and reach out to every one of the businesses in the Visitation Avenue quarter and ask them to tell us what size delivery trucks they get their deliveries in and to approximate what days and what times of days, we'd be happy to do that, to give you the information that maybe will be useful for you. Happy to do that.
You know, every business that, I mean, we get beer deliveries out of Sierra Point Yacht Club, and luckily we have a really big parking lot. Um, but we can tell them that we only take deliveries between eight and ten on Tuesdays and Thursdays if we want. We can make it very specific on what time those big trucks come. Now, if you need to have a big truck every day, that's a different story. And I don't know how much volume Midtown or some of the other businesses do, but it, for the most part, you can make it very specific when you want your big trucks to come.
All right.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna change text here a little bit. Given that there's some outreach opportunities here, perhaps let me make this recommendation. Let's hold off on, on all of this. Let's do some additional outreach. Let's not pick and choose little things that we're gonna start in a, uh, in some sort of test, cause it should be comprehensive in its approach. So, I think we've gotten the message, uh, related to additional outreach to, uh, the businesses in the community.
And, and residents.
Residents as well, yeah. Yeah, right, I'm sorry, the residents who live on Visitation as well. We'll take it from there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager Dennis. Okay, moving on to item P. Consider authorizing staff to release a request for proposals for city attorney's services. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mister Mayor and members of the council. Very briefly, per previous discussions with the, uh, council, staff has prepared, uh, the attached RFP for city attorney recruitment, uh, requests. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. We, we hope that we captured everything that was in that discussion, but certainly there may be some additional elements based on the, um, the examples that we provided that you'd like to see included. So happy to take that input. Thank you.
All right, uh, any questions from council? Terry and I are on the ad hoc committee, um, looking at various, uh, options. Do you have anything you, uh, like to?
The only, only thing I'm, I'm going to say is that I thought that, you know, we would be able to um, do an in-house RFP to start with and see what we comes of that. If we, at the end of that point, if we don't have, um, a good candidate pool or we don't get a good response, or we feel it's beyond our scope to whittle it down, then we would, you know, be happy to change tracks and go with a, uh, recruitment firm. But I think that we have enough brain power on staff and within this council to do an RFP and throw the hook out there and see what we get.
So, a- any council members have, uh, concerns with that or questions about that?
Just, just a, a comment and a question, that's all. Um, so I'm on page two fifty-four and it's the second bullet. It says, "A statement that the proposer or any individual who will perform the work in accordance with the proposal is free of legal conferen- conflicts of interest, yada, yada, yada." That's all we want is a statement. Is that all we can get?
I think at the RFP point, that's what we'd want. I mean, once we-
Cause I could insert my name right into this sta- this and send it back. Like literally, I could say, "I, Frank Kern, who will perform the work in accordance with the proposal is free of legal conflicts." Just literally inserting a person's name into that sentence.
Through the chair, Tom, did you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, we, we actually went back and forth a little on this for that reason, uh, Councilmember Kern, but the notion was exactly as, uh, Councilmember O'Connell was saying, this, it can be addressed, uh, in the next round.
Great, thank you so much. And then the second thing, and I was, I was really putting some thought into this, and, um, this is based upon something that, um, Councilmember O'Connell said to me in the past. It's under the references section on page two fifty-five. It's the second sentence. It says, "The city prefers references from local government agencies," which I'm, I'm cool with that part, "with populations of ten thousand or less." And I think you said jokingly one time, Councilmember O'Connell, "We have every problem that a big city prob- has here." And so I don't know why we, we would even include that in there. I, I think that if we had an attorney coming from a bigger city, I, I, I think we should invite that.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. Was that something that was left over from the original, uh, or the, uh, proposal that was back in the day when we-
Did you find that?
Rennie Sloan?
No, if I, if I recall correctly, and Tom, you can correct me if I'm wrong, um, given that even, even, Councilmember O'Connell's correct, very similar issues. Um, but sometimes there's an approach that feels different, um, has a different sort of, um, subjective take, um, from, in a small city. So, when you, when you bring big city folks into small cities, sometimes that's just inherently challenging. There's no reason not to delete this. I, I think it's fine.
It, it's- And, and I don't really know if we addressed this line in particular. I, I don't think we did on this round. But I think that when you get into a, a larger, now, and this is just for references.
For references, yes.
But if you get into a, a, an attorney that is used to having staff and underlings, they have a different, um, approach to how they're going to do their work compared to someone who is more used to hap- being on the smaller level and dealing with people on the individual scale instead of as a collective.
Okay.
But again, this said, if possible, so it, it's not written in stone.
Okay, yeah. Clearly you put thought into it. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
This is a, a well-done RFP, by the way.
All right, Madison, anything?
No.
Okay, Senator Mackin, okay, good. So, um, then, uh, let's see, any members of the public wanna comment? Nope, I don't see anyone raising hand online. So, uh, we asked some questions, but it seems like, uh, we also did a little discussion unless there's further discussion that the council wants to have.
So, I, do we need to do a motion on this, or we're just giving you authorization?
That's what I was, uh, you do not. You just give staff direction.
Okay.
And they've got that.
And we've got that, and we will be moving forward with recruitment.
Okay, then I think we're good. Okay. Staff report, city manager report, city updates and upcoming activities.
Sure, I'm gonna focus tonight on upcoming activities, given that, uh, we're, council will be taking a break. Um, so, starting this weekend will be the second of five concerts in the park. Um, DJ Sharon will be here for that event. On Saturday, uh, the Cave, excuse me, Cave Adventures at the Brisbane Community Park from ten to five. This is a library event. Um, it's a cave sim, simulated sixty feet of tunnels to explore, so this will come out on Saturday.
That sounds fun.
Yeah, and adults too. There is a free ADU resource webinar that is on Wednesday, uh, July twenty-third from ten to eleven. That webinar, um, is being held by the county, um, in the ADU, ADU Resource Center. So those who are interested in-
How many free ADUs are we giving out?
Uh, it looks like zero. And then obviously we have another concert in the park on, uh, July twenty-fifth as well, and that is um, the Fast Times Band. It's an eighties band, so that should be a lot of fun. And then the last event, um, in July is Summer Teen Nights on the twenty- excuse me, on the twenty-ninth of, uh, January. Um, and this is part of the four event cycle, and that'll be held at the Sunrise Room and Visitation. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Council, I mean, uh, City Manager Dennis, for that. Uh, Mayor Council Matters, Countywide Assignments and Subcommittee Report, so any, um, so we have some report outs, uh, from our subcommittees, the Corey Subcommittee, the Age Friendly Subcommittee. So, um, and the Liaisons to Complete Streets and Safety Subcommittee, so does, do any council members wanna get additional information from, other than what's, uh, in the staff report? Okay, uh, Countywide Assignments, um, I have a look to you, Councilmember Mackin, uh, please entertain us.
Okay, here's your entertainment for the evening. So, I did not have a PCE meeting. They had a meeting and I was unable to attend because we scheduled the council meeting on the same night. And I would hope we don't do that again, because it, it's really tough to miss those meetings. In addition, CCG, um, I've talked to you several meetings about upcoming proposed transit tax. And there is a lot of pressure going on with this, because they're trying to get it on the ballot, and that deadline would be in August. Um, I made several requests to get it on tonight's agenda, and for some reason it didn't make it. So, I have prepared copies of the presentation I got as a CCG board member. I've included a list of comments made by board members that were relevant at the meeting, questions and comments about it. And I have a board meeting on the thirtieth. I would like to hear from each of my colleagues, your opinion on where you stand on this through staff. Obviously, you can't all talk to me. And the importance is this, it's a big deal. It's a sales tax measure. If it goes in effect, it's there, it's not going away. The rate right now has not been decided. Why do we care? Because we would be giving money to support Muni and BART. And there are statistics of how many San Mateo County residents actually ride those two. There's anticipated to be a huge deficit with Muni this year and even worse in three years. BART also has had ongoing problems. So, one of the big issues was accountability. There's gonna be a transit board consisting of whom? Is it one vote per city, or how does that work? Funds. So let's say we get a lot of revenues, we're an affluent county. And what if, I, I, I mean, are those gonna be used anywhere to support problems with Muni? Or just within our county? That's not been decided. What if there's an excess of funds? Do we get them back? It's not been decided. There's a lot of issues like that. And then one board member brought up, well, BART's had problems. So what if they get the sales tax and this goes through, and in two, three years they come back and go, oh my god, we need more money? What accountability measures are in there? The other problem that is really big, we have Measure Eight, it supports SAM Trans, Para Transit. It does highway improvements and road improvements, all in our own county. We are self-sufficient. We're being asked to join this new transit authority. We don't have to. We can just say, we don't wanna, we essentially would have to be opting in, not opting out, but opting in. They want us to opt in, saying, well, we're gonna help you with the cost you have to contribute to Caltrain. And so, Measure A supports all of our current systems in place. That has to renew in twenty thirty-three if we want it to continue. If we have a transit tax that passes that's in place, can we ever get the two-thirds majority to renew Measure A? In which case, we could potentially be hurting ourselves. And SAM Trans is facing a big capital deficit in three years. Lots of infrastructure problems that have not been dealt with for years. So where's that money gonna come from? These are all issues. I feel we have a responsibility to all of our residents to really do due diligence. I know how I feel about it, but I think each of you represent constituents as well. I don't want to make that sole decision for our city. And CalCities had asked us to weigh in with a letter, either in support or against, and I don't believe the city has issued a letter. And then CCG had asked at the last meeting, before we have this board meeting on the 30th, to discuss with our city. And we're not discussing it tonight, so I need your feedback before that meeting through staff. And I ask you to really give it careful consideration. I will also add that I am aware that Diane Pappan has been working on amendments. CCG had written a letter that's included in what I copied, asking for 10 amendments to clarify how this giant new bureaucratic transit board would work. And nothing has come back to date that's been made public. I understand Diane Pappan is working with Scott Weiner, is one of the three authors of the bill. Diane's working with Weiner, who seems to be amenable to addressing some of these requests for amendments. But until we see the amendments, do we want to just say yes? That's a problem. And there was nothing on CCG going, "No, we don't support public transit." We all agreed, we need public transit. It's a matter of, do we want to sign up to this bill? Because it doesn't mean that's the end of public transit if we don't. If we get amendments, maybe we go, "Yes, okay, we can live with this." But please, please, please consider it carefully, and I really do need all of your feedback. Because even comments, I will relay those comments to the full board. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Thanks for keeping us in the loop on that, because I think it's really important. And I know how hard it is to take the responsibility on one of those big decisions and be the lone voice going, "Hmm, maybe, maybe not." So it's really good to get that extra help.
Yeah, it's also that a lot of cities, there's also a chart in there what all the sales tax rates are. There are several cities considering sales tax measures for the ballot for their city because we've all been suffering from post-COVID lack of revenues. And so how, how much chance, they've all verbalized, how much chance do we have to get our ballot measure passed if there's also another sales tax on top of that? And Brisbane may, in fact, want to consider a sales tax measure. And how will that go if this transit tax goes in and our rate goes up and then people go, "Oh, no, no, no more." So we need to really think this through.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, we're already at 9.875%. Add something like this, add, you know, potentially a sales tax measure if we felt that we needed the money, right? So, all right, thank you for that. Any other countywide assignments that you'd like to share? Okay, so you've got the upcoming Subcommittee Meetings and Staff Report, thank you for that. And Oral Communications, number two.
Wait, do we have written communications?
Don't we, don't we have another upcoming Subcommittee Meeting on Quarry? It's not on this?
Yeah, my apologies, I will let the council know that that wasn't on, I'll get that information out.
That was scheduled after that was put out.
Okay.
Right, I missed the written communications. City Clerk?
Written correspondence were received from staff, updated staff report, new business item O, recommended visitation improvements, from Florkowski, Large Data Center, 714-2025, from Cheng, 80 Santa Clara Street, 715-2025, from Folian, new business, item O, from 717 BCC Meeting Agenda, 717-2025, and from Repke, Safety Sticks, 717-2025.
Thank you for that. Okay, Oral Communications, number two. Anyone want to speak?
There's a hand raised online.
I'm sorry, I couldn't be here for Oral Communications one, but I, two things. One, I wanted to thank all of you for coming and participating in the San Bruno Mountain Watch Summer Solstice Celebration. I saw each and every one of you there, and it just warmed my heart. And then the other thing I wanted to say is thank you very much for keeping your word and using the money from the Frito-Lay purchase to buy those five lots and secure them for open space. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Michelle. All right, so we have, looks like two hands. So, who are, okay, so we have Chris and Roland. So, Chris, you have the floor.
Yeah, and I hope that's the Roland that I think it is. The comments about the upcoming ballot measures on public transportation, it's really important that we take a look at those, and it's really important that we not view San Mateo County in isolation. Public transit has to work, and it works best when we don't silo the solutions. If you, just try and imagine what Bay Area traffic would be like if BART goes away or if BART has to drastically reduce its service. Imagine all of those people on the road. You can see now that San Mateo County is having to catch up and make up for the fact that it declined to participate in BART to begin with because we chose to think in isolation. So this is a really important measure, and yes, it's absolutely true that we need to get the details clarified, and this is an opportunity to influence those details. This is a really important ballot measure, and we absolutely need support for funding for Bay Area transportation, not just San Mateo County. Thank you.
Thank you. Roland, you have the floor. Roland, are you there? Amit, yourself, please.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, it works, it works a lot better when I get the AMU. And Chris is right, this is probably the Roland she thinks I am. And I just want to give you a very brief update on what is now known as Senate Bill 63. It really is late for the council to be involved with this. If you wanted to be involved, my advice to you would have been probably three months ago. If you really want to know what's going on, probably reviewing the last SAM Trans Board Meeting earlier this month, they can give you a lot of information. On next week, in six days, on July 23rd, the Caltrain Board Meeting, we'll have information about this, and they can have other discussions about funding and governance. The SMCTA will vote since late July on whether to recommend a SAM Trans of 10. And the final decision will be on the August 6th SAM Trans Board Meeting. Moving forward, I strongly encourage you to support this measure. There are guardrails, such as 100% return to source, which means after, obviously, you've got some anonymity, physical, and, you know, coordination, region-wide expenditures, everything else will come back to SAM Trans. The last thing I want to bring to your attention with regard to renewing, I guess, this Measure Eight, is that the date of getting two-thirds of the vote to pass a first tax measure are over. And you really got to start thinking about introducing legislation in San Mateo County that's going to make it possible for citizens to put citizen initiatives on the ballot. Thank you, and good night.
All right, thank you, Roland. All righty, well, thank you, everyone, for attending our tonight's.
Did you want to comment on the upcoming meeting, the Quarry Subcommittee?
Angel, would you share the date of the time of the date of the meeting, please?
Yes, the date is Wednesday, July 23rd at 2:00 PM.
Thank you.
All right, so thank you, everyone, and the meeting is adjourned.
Right on time.